Hey, Ken.
Is is Michael Pelosi around tonight? Are you handling it all tonight?
I believe you're stuck with me.
Well, that's okay. You're getting very good at this. Make sure the chat's off and and also follow the protocol for any members of the public that speak, okay?
Yep, and already chat is already off.
Awesome. Great job.
Eight thirty, seven thirty, if you want to start, Joe.
Joe, you need to unmute.
Why don't I unmute myself when I start? How's that?
Yeah, I don't think he was ready to say start.
I'll do it better this time. This Borough Madison zoning board of adjustment meeting is now called to order. This is the regular virtual meeting of May thirteen, twenty twenty one. Can I get an announcement of notice, please?
Let the minutes reflect that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. At the reorganization meeting of the board held on January fourteenth, twenty twenty one, the board by resolution adopted an annual schedule of meetings. On January fifteenth, twenty twenty one, a copy of the schedule of meetings was posted at the bulletin board at the main entrance of the Hartley Dodge Memorial, was sent to the Madison Eagle and the Daily Record, and filed with the Borough Clerk, all in accordance with the Open Publics Meetings Act. In response to public safety considerations and legal authorization, the Board of Adjustment began conducting its monthly meetings remotely using the Zoom platform. And subsequently, separate notices have been published each month advertising of this change and indicating that the procedures and requirements for monitoring such meetings and for making public comment along with an explanation of the audio meeting function of the electronic communications platform being utilized is provided with detailed information on how to use Zoom and participate found on the Rosette webpage communications.
Perfect. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. D'Anio.
Here.
Mr. Driscoll.
Here.
Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Here.
Dr. Peitzel.
Here.
Ms. Salco.
Here.
Mr. Santoro.
Here.
Mr. Foster.
Here.
Ms. Taratelli.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Fran has the flag ready to go. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Right, excellent. All right, first off. Minutes for approval. These are the special minutes of April twenty nine, twenty twenty one. Does anybody have anything there?
I did not.
It looks okay to me. Okay, so all in favor of the minutes as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Oss. Okay, these minutes are approved. Next are the minutes of May sixth, twenty twenty one.
Mr. Santoro, just before you start, I'd like you to know that I did receive two small corrections via email today from Mrs. Driscoll. They've been incorporated into the minutes as she has suggested. So there will be new minutes that will be posted on the website if these are approved.
Okay, but what were the changes, just so we are all aware?
On page three. What I had written was Mr. Phillips commented on the fact that two retail units consisting of eight hundred square feet and the other thousand square feet was a more marketable approach. The proposed change was Mr. Phillips commented on the fact that the proposal is for two retail units, one consisting of eight hundred square feet and the other one thousand square feet. Then on the same page, the original was Ms. Taratelli asked if the elevator serviced the mezzanine. The mezzanine is an amenity to the apartment. The proposed change was the mezzanine is an amenity within the apartment. So two minor changes.
Okay, anything else? Anybody?
Not for me.
Okay, then, all in favor of these minutes, changes discussed, please say aye.
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 Oss. Okay, these minutes were approved. Okay, we have resolutions for memorialization. First one is case number Z twenty one zero zero eight, resolution granting variance application of common unless the common block nine oh one lot eleven, one oh seven Greenwood Ave.
I had only one suggested change, Gary, and this applies to all three of the resolutions. None of the resolutions list me as having been there, and I was there, and I voted for each of the resolutions. So you can just add me into each one of them.
Well, I think you were the eighth person, though. That's why.
Okay, so, okay. That's fine.
Unless I miscounted somewhere.
Ms. Salco was not in attendance.
Oh, okay.
So she would come out, and Mr. Foster would go in.
Okay.
And then.
That's fine.
And then you can spell my name right on that, too, okay?
Oh, yeah, that's a good point. Did I repeat that?
Okay, so is there any other changes to this?
Not for me.
Okay, so they're all in favor of this resolution with their change discussed, please say aye.
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 Oss. All right, this resolution is adopted. Next is case number Z twenty one zero zero nine, resolution granting variance application, Robert Howells, Howells, block one zero zero one, lot forty two, one oh six. That one looked okay to me.
Yeah, actually, though, I had a correction to that.
Okay.
After I saw the minutes, I wanted to add paragraph seven on page. You didn't have page numbers.
Oh, yeah, we need page numbers.
Oh, I thought it was the other one. Don't we just? The other ones do. But on page two, paragraph seven, says testimony in support of the application was provided by the applicants. I would like to add, and their architect, John Bazuski. Actually, I like to list the professionals. I omitted that.
Okay.
Verified he was there for the minute, and of course, I will change Mr. Foster on the vote at the end.
And take out Ms. Salco.
Right, correct. I'll substitute, yes.
Okay, well, in favor of this resolution with the changes discussed, please say aye.
Aye.
Oss. Because resolution is adopted. Next is case number Z twenty one zero one zero, resolution granting variance application, Ross and Megan Downing. Block three zero one, lot forty eight, six, Marred Court.
I had just one substantive change. It's just a typo on page two, paragraph thirteen, line one, two, three, four, right at the end. NJSA, there's an extra S in that statute site.
Okay, and and on this one, I also wanted to make a similar change, actually, add a whole paragraph. After six, I'd like to add testimony in support of the application was provided by the applicants and by architect Rita Schmidt, who explained the proposal. And then the rest will be renumbered, the rest of the.
Mary Sue coming out at the end, right?
Yeah, and I'll change the vote correctly as well on that one.
Okay.
And and the pagination on this one needs to be fixed as well.
Uh, this one has paid. Oh. It doesn't have a one. It's got two and three.
Oh, because on my copy, it's three and three.
Oh, really? Okay, well.
All right, we'll just check it. Mine's one, mine's two and three.
I'll check that and verify before it goes down.
All right, all in favor of this resolution is discussed, please say aye.
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 Okay, oss. All right, resolution is adopted. Scheduling procedural matters. Just for anybody listening, case number Z twenty one zero zero four is on June tenth. Be scheduled to June tenth. And then fifty four Maple Avenue, that's Z twenty one oh fourteen, Huber. That one is June ten as well due to noticing. Anything else we need to announce, Gary?
No, I guess we were going to say that hopefully we'll get through the rest of them, but wait a minute, I'm looking here. This says that Fritill sixteen is carried also due to notice.
Yes.
So makes it likely, hopefully, it means we can finish the other ones.
Okay, so Fritill is June ten?
Yes.
Okay, and that's been referred to HPC, right?
It already has. There was a letter from HPC in the application.
Oh, it was? I missed it. Okay. I'll look for that. Thank you for telling me that. Okay, so let's. Let's move to old business. This is case number Z twenty oh eighteen, Madison Movie Development LLC. So. So this is the seventh time we're meeting on this. Oh, my goodness. Okay.
Okay. Fran, you want to take Helen and I off the panel for this, then?
Yes, please.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Foster should. Turn off his video, leave the room, whatever. He's recused.
So he's going to become an attendee.
Yeah, he should not be in the room. Looks like he's gone. So I guess where we were, we were gonna.
Mary Sue, too.
Excuse me?
I mean, oh, Helen.
Helen's not here anyway, so she's also accused for the record, but she's not here, period.
Okay, we're good. Good to go.
So I guess Mr. Keller previously sworn was going to be open to further questioning by Mr. Simon.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I might, Peter Wolfson of Dave Pitney here on behalf of the applicant. And as you noted, this continuing application, you recall that Mr. Keller had been open to cross examination from all members of the public on his traffic and engineering, and that all that remained was for Mr. Simon to complete his questioning. He had started his questioning at one of the prior sessions of the hearing, but tonight's goal is for him to complete his cross examination.
That's correct.
Okay, Mr. Simon, are you ready to go with that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. As always, Rob Simon from Herald Law. Mr. Keller, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Simon.
You can hear me, okay?
Yes.
And and as usual, if I slip into Eric versus Mr. Keller, I do not mean to offend, certainly.
No offense taken.
And you can, you know, respond accordingly, of course. So just, Mr. Chairman, just by way of background, so I did for, as a courtesy to the board, I went back and I reviewed the end of the April eighth, twenty twenty one meeting where I was cross examining Mr. Keller regarding his testimony. And at that point, I was stopped from my questioning to go to other applications with the right of me to finish my questioning, and also with the benefit of first reviewing the revised plans. I've had an opportunity to do so. I've also had the opportunity to listen to the video or watch the video, excuse me, of Mr. Keller's last testimony. And so I am fully prepared to finish my questioning of Mr. Keller, and I will do so. So thank you. So, Mr. Keller, with regard to sheet four dated April twenty third, twenty twenty one, how many parking spaces have actually been lost by the reconfiguration and restriping of the lot twenty two and twenty three parking lot?
If you.
Lost as compared to what?
As compared to the the present condition and the availability of parking spaces.
Well, since there's nothing really striped today, it's it's hard to say that, you know, to compare numbers. There there is no striping out there today, or if there is, most of it's worn. So I can't put a number to that.
So you have not observed or been told of the capacity of the combined lot twenty two and twenty three parking lot as it currently exists?
I've observed it on a number of occasions, but with current conditions, most times that I've been there, I don't think I've seen more than, you know, half a dozen, maybe eight cars.
And and prior to COVID, you didn't have an opportunity to observe the the parking lot in terms of the number of cars that could be parked, its capacity or otherwise, capacity for parking or otherwise.
No, I did not.
Were you told, you know, you've talked over the course of this application of conversations with the owner of at least one of those lots, I think it's Mr. Robinelli or something like that?
Romanelli.
Romanelli, I apologize. Based on conversations with the owners or operators of either of lot twenty two and twenty three, do you have any idea of the current parking capacity for those lots?
I I don't. We did not discuss capacity. We we discussed area.
Area, meaning what?
The area available for parking.
And how much and how much area, Mr. Keller, is currently available for parking?
Square footage wise, I I couldn't tell you how much square footage of areas available for parking. I don't know.
And with regard to the proposed fourteen parking spaces, based on your knowledge of this application and communications with both your client as well as the owners, operators of lot twenty two and or twenty three, do you know who will be parking in those fourteen parking spaces given the gate?
Um, not specifically, other than that it was his tenants. He did not specify who that was.
Because he don't know if it's employees or patrons or otherwise.
Uh, specifically, no. And he was the one who asked for the gate, so it gives him the control.
Right, so if I'm if I'm a patron going to one of those establishments, I'm not going to be able to park in in one of those fourteen parking spaces because I don't have access to open the gate, correct?
Correct.
And. Um, do you know where the lot twenty four, this Madison movie theater application lot, where those employees are going to park, both residential and retail?
Well, there would be. The the retail employees would would park in municipal lots. That's what I testified to. And if there were any residential employees which are really transient. They would park on the street or in a lot.
And are you aware whether any of those units, residential units, are able to have a home-based business within any of those units under the ordinance?
I I don't know. That's a planning question. I didn't do planning.
And with regard to the the lot, lots twenty two and twenty three, that's going to be a shared parking lot? For both those lots?
It's maintaining the usage as it exists today, so.
Right, well, but but the proposed, the you're proposing improvements on lots twenty two and twenty three. So my question is, is the intent that the combined lots twenty two and twenty three are going to be used together as a fourteen space parking lot?
What my answer is, is that they're going to continue to use that parking area as they do today, whatever that arrangement is, is that it will remain.
Okay, so you don't know what the arrangement is?
No.
Okay, so so you don't know whether the intention of this application for development is that is that lots twenty two employees and visitors are only going to park on the lot twenty two side, and the lot twenty three visitors and employees are only going to park on the lot twenty three side? Is that your understanding?
We didn't discuss. My charge as the engineer was to design a parking lot that mirrored what exists today. How it gets used, who gets to use it, is not a relevant question from an engineering perspective.
From an engineering perspective, the way you design this, is it practical for the lot to essentially, lots twenty two and twenty three, to essentially be split up so that, you know, one owner only uses their side and one owner only uses their side for parking?
I couldn't answer that question.
And do you have any knowledge at all as to whether there's been any maintenance responsibilities delineated for the parking lot between the two owners or operators?
I'm not aware, no.
Okay, are you aware of any arrangement for the maintenance of not only the parking lot, but the lighting and the fencing that straddles both properties?
I am not. We've, you know, as I testified to last week, the the design of this lot and the components of that design were reviewed and agreed upon by Mr. Romanelli, who maintains them, how, what, I don't know.
And Mr. Romanelli, who is he?
He's one of the adjacent property owners.
And and he's the adjacent property owner of what lot or lots?
Specifically, I'm not sure.
So so you don't, is, does he own, so you don't know whether he owns lots eleven, twenty two, and or twenty three?
I think he's answered these questions. You're getting repetitive, Rob.
I'm asking, well, he just mentioned.
He just said he didn't know anything, and you've asked ten questions, he gave the same answer. I mean, I think he said he designed it to repave it, period.
Yeah, well, but he also talked about numerous conversations over many hearings with Mr. Romanelli, and I'm just asking him the question for the first time, whether he knows what lot or lots Mr. Romanelli.
He said they didn't know, all right.
Please. Mr. Mr. Keller, with regard, so on your most recently revised plan, you show an infiltration trench that encompasses both lots twenty two and twenty three. Who will have stormwater management maintenance responsibilities for that infiltration trench?
It resides with the property owner.
But if there, but there are two property owners, right?
Well, there's two separate lots.
Right, so there's two separate lots with two separate property owners, correct?
Well, the the listed owner's names are different. I don't know that there that that there isn't a relationship between them. I I just, I can read off of my plans as to who the property owner is, but, you know, whether they're different or not, I don't know.
So the answer is you don't know who's going to be responsible for the stormwater management maintenance going forward if this application is approved with regard to the infiltration trench that I've described.
It retain, it's retained by the property owner. Or their agent, whoever that may be.
Is there is there proposed to be a stormwater management maintenance manual that's going to be issued and created in connection with that infiltration trench?
For an infiltration trench, it's really not required. There really is no maintenance associated with it. It it will percolate water into the ground.
And there's no maintenance required in terms of cleaning it out?
It's a stone-filled trench wrapped in filter fabric. So really, there's very little cleaning that would be required other than possibly to remove debris from the surface. So.
Right. And you're not aware of any prior land development approvals for lots twenty two, twenty three, eleven, or twelve, correct?
Correct.
And you would agree that the improvements proposed to be made on lots twenty two, twenty three, and eleven could all be made without the need to develop lot twenty four at all as being as is being proposed by this applicant for lot twenty four, correct? Like, they could, they could submit their own separate development applications, right?
Presumably, yes.
And then why is lot twenty four, to your knowledge, as the engineer on the project, making improvements to lots twenty two, twenty three, and eleven in connection with the development of the proposed building on lot twenty four?
Well, the access to the site today and in the future is through a shared access driveway that's partially on the subject property and partially on lot twenty three. And, you know, I I was not part of the discussions between the applicant and the adjacent property owners, but there was an agreement that they would make improvements because there's improvements needed needed to the shared driveway, likewise for lot eleven. And some of the improvements on lot eleven have been driven by comments that we've received from the board's professionals and the board itself.
And even with the no right turn, no right turn sign coming out of the lot twenty two and twenty three parking lot, right? There's going to be one for that, for the gate?
Correct.
And then there's going to be a no left turn sign coming out of the underground garage, correct?
Think the sign is right turn only, but effectively, yes.
Or I apologize, same.
That's fine, no.
Right turn only. And is there is there going to be a stop sign or a stop bar for the the garage when you're coming up?
I mean, typically, we, you know, you're coming out of a garage to a driveway. We don't put stop signs in in those locations. I'm not a big proponent of overselling properties and cluttering the environment with that. If it's something that the board and its professionals thinks is appropriate, we could do it, but at this point, we haven't proposed it because I think it's unnecessary.
So if there's a vehicle, and let me just ask one more question on this. So if there's a vehicle that is coming from lot eleven towards Lincoln, which they're allowed to do today, and presumably will continue to be allowed to do, and you're exiting the driveway, and, you know, you you go up the ramp, and then you just immediately turn to the right, there's a possibility that that there could be an accident because they're not going to be looking because they're not stopping, so they're not going to be looking for the cars coming from the left, correct?
I I don't follow your question.
So if I'm if I'm in a car, I'm leaving the garage, coming up the coming up the ramp, the garage door opens. The only, the only control sign I have is right turn only, right? So I'm coming up, I'm gaining speed to get up the ramp, and I'm immediately going to make the right-hand turn. I'm not stopped because I don't have a stop sign or a stop bar, and I'm not looking to the left and right like I normally would do, or at least to the left, if I'm at a stop. And there is a possibility that there's a car coming from the lot eleven lot across the driveway towards Lincoln Place, correct?
Well, I mean, yes, it's possible that somebody comes from a lot eleven as somebody comes out of our garage. However, just like in many parking lots, when you're in a parking aisle and you're coming up to the main drive aisle, there's not a stop, there may not be a stop sign there. That doesn't mean that when you get to a nine ninety-degree intersection, that you don't stop and look both directions before you pull into the driveway. But again, if, you know, if the board and its professionals think that this is of concern, is that we can paint a stop bar and the word stop and a and place a stop sign there. But I think it's pretty obvious that when you come out of a garage or come out of a driveway, and you reach an intersecting driveway, you stop and look both ways.
And wasn't, can I just say that we've had two traffic experts discuss? You know, the driver behavior, let's call it, exiting out onto Lincoln, and neither of them felt that that was dangerous or a problem. Driver behavior, let's call it, exiting out onto Lincoln, and neither of them felt that that was dangerous or a problem.
I asked the question, I received my answer. Um, with regard, Mr. Keller, to the. No right turn or right turn only. Um, signs that you're proposing in those uh, in those two areas that I described described earlier. There's nothing in a pre physically prevent someone from making a right or a left as the case may be. And and cutting through lot eleven to get to Main Street, you know, but that's of course assuming that they're not following the signage, correct?
There's nothing physical.
And then um. Prior to this application, there were no cars from lot twenty-four. Uh, that were utilizing the easement area, correct?
I I don't, I don't know what people for lot twenty-four did.
Um, do you have any knowledge that anyone uh, associated with lot twenty-four used the easement area for any reason?
No, I I I don't, no.
And um. Prior to this application. Uh, cars parked on lots twenty-two and twenty-three were able to not only use the. The driveway easement area, but also lot eleven to get access to Main Street, correct? Is that your understanding?
Well, let me put it this way, there's no signs that direct people. Uh, to travel. In this combined parking area. There is no guidance today.
And and you're not aware of any counts or frequency of use? At any time prior to today, correct?
No.
For the driveway?
No.
And Eric, you you mentioned at the last hearing that there's going to be a sign. And this is a clarification question, a sign that says authorized vehicles only. At the rear of lot twenty-three. Where where is that? Is that sign facing Lincoln?
Correct. If you're coming down the shared driveway from Lincoln. Um, it is placed before you enter lot eleven.
And and what constitutes an authorized vehicle?
Um, a resident of that lot, um, it was. The language that was agreed upon with the owner of lot eleven. Um.
Okay, and and the car and and if this application is approved. The cars on lot eleven can utilize the driveway easement area. To and from Lincoln, including the new portion of it that's located on lot twenty-four, right?
Uh, yes.
And um, lots eleven and twelve. Um, then both have rights over lots twenty-three and twenty-four for ingress and egress. Uh, to and from Lincoln, correct?
Um.
As proposed.
Physically, yes. Whether they have legal rights? I'm not, I'm not an attorney. I'm an engineer. They can physically travel. Uh, across that driveway to Lincoln Place.
And the the area of lot eleven. That is uh, under your most recent plan hatched and uh, you know, it provides access to the garbage area. At the rear of lot twenty-four and also the drywells at the rear of lot twenty-four. That's part of the, what you denote as the seventeen-foot right-of-way. Correct?
Well, the drywells are on the subject property that are within the. Uh, enclosure area. Um, and a portion of the rear of. At the rear of the proposed building on lot eleven. It contained within the seventeen-foot wide right-of-way. Um, but the pavement repairs will extend beyond the right-of-way. That seventeen-foot wide right-of-way.
So, but the 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 hatched area that's going to provide the access for the for the garbage and for the drywells. That's not going to be used by lot eleven anymore for any reason, right?
It's to be correct.
And the the van parking area. And the refuse recycling area within the seventeen-foot right-of-way. They're no longer available for the, that's not going to be available for the right-of-way holders anymore, right? Um. Because that's all exclusively lot eleven, or at least that's what it appears to be.
You know, I I, from a legal perspective, I don't know. Um, the uh, enclosed refuse and recycling area. For the, for the benefit of lot eleven. Um, is greeted upon, has been agreed upon. By both the applicant and the owner of lot eleven. Um, the the van parking area, as I testified to a couple of times, is not going to be striped. It is just to denote that there is sufficient space in which. The van, which is currently parked there on a regular basis, will have space to park there in the future. Um. If the van's not there, that area is open and available for use by whoever.
Well, well, when you say available for use, so um, can can somebody? Someone can't park there though, right? Because that's for the van.
Not, it's not striped for parking. Um, other than, you know, as we said, it's an accommodation. For the owner who parks his van there. Or.
And and.
Any of the parts are abandoned.
Right, and and with regard to the um, that hatched access area to the garbage area. And the drywell, you know, the rear of of twenty-four, um, how how? I I I reviewed your your turning templates and you didn't provide one for a garbage truck or a a drywell maintenance truck. To get in and out of that area. Are they going to, Mr. Keller, um, kind of drive in and then have to back out?
I think we heard all about that about three meetings ago.
Yeah.
Going to go back to the backup and then they'll walk over to the storage area. So I think we don't need to hear this again.
Okay, and that and that is, I know it was three meetings ago. Um, that has not. Based on this current design and your change of the plans, that's still the plan, Mr. Keller?
The the change of plans has no impact on. How we discussed accessibility uh, to the rear for for vehicles.
And. Um, Mr. Stern uh, was was asking you a little bit about landscaping at the last meeting. Um, and and referenced the fact that you're going to need. Uh, a a land, some form of buffer landscaping variance. Do you know what, to what extent you need such a variance?
Um, that was uh, the testimony from uh, Paul Phillips. Um, I don't recall the the specifics of it. Other than that, we don't comply with um. With the ordinance.
And um. I'll ask Mr. Phillips then. So why, but why is there no landscaping? In the strip between lot twenty-two and lot twelve? That is shown as concrete?
The. Area um. Is, we're paving the area that's currently used for parking. Uh, that concrete pad is already there. It's existed for some period of time. So uh, there's no landscaping. Today, we're approving it by putting in a fence, but we're not able to put in any plans.
So um, is is that, is that concrete pad, is that part of? Because because right now it's on lot, I think twenty-two. Is that concrete pad? Used by lot twelve or used by lot twenty-two or neither?
It's used by lot twelve.
And so it encroaches, there's an encroachment onto lot twenty-two by that lot twelve concrete pad.
Yes.
And the intent is not to disturb that and not put put landscaping on any part of lots twenty-two in that area, correct?
Correct.
And the fact that. You're sort of fencing in and isolating, you know, what I'll call that triangle in the corner. Uh, dividing lot twenty-two and lot twelve. Um, means that. You're not going to be able to, lot twenty-two is not going to be able to access. Part of their land, correct?
Correct.
And um. The. Do you know um, whether uh, and and this was. Discussed a little bit, but I don't think I ever heard an answer in my review of the videos. Um, whether there's going to be an agreement between. Your client and uh, the Borough of Madison. To permanently assign public parking spaces to tenants of fourteen Lincoln Place?
I I don't understand the question, Mr. Simon. I'm sorry.
So um. You're you, you have a parking space deficiency, correct?
Um, well. Um, we 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 have a, we're requesting a de minimis exception. From the R R S I S. There is no parking requirement for the commercial space. Uh, per the Borough Code. Um, we are asking for uh, an exception from R S I S for the residential. Um, which was addressed to my report and also addressed by the Borough's Traffic Consultant.
Yeah, no, I'm I'm well aware of that. I'm not going to go over that. Um, specifically, but with regard to. The the shortfall in terms of 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 spaces. Uh, if you. If somebody who's living in one of the units. They have more than one car. Aren't they going to need to utilize a public parking space?
Uh, the Borough has a process um. Through their their permit parking um. Applications to address that. Um, an individual would have to. Uh, uh, deal with that with uh, with the Borough directly.
Okay, but but you have no independent knowledge as to. Uh, the history of that, have any permits have been given out or the likely hit a procedural permit, correct?
Um, I I don't know how many have been given out. You know, we did. An extensive parking. Analysis of the adjacent lots and determined that there are available parking spaces. Um, but the permit parking uh, availability is a very dynamic process uh, and changes on a. On a, on a regular basis. So that's. That's up to to the individual and the Borough.
Do you know whether there's an opportunity for a guest or a visitor of a a renter of one of these units? To park in a in a public parking space overnight in the Borough of Madison?
Uh, I don't recall what the Borough's regulations are for overnight parking.
Um. And then with regard to um, just a couple of follow-up questions based on your testimony about. Uh, site distance. So, or your site distance analysis. Uh, the ASHTO guidelines would say that the location of the driver's eye should be fourteen and a half feet. Behind the edge of the traveled way, correct?
Correct.
And in Lincoln Place, I believe. Has a a posted speed limit of twenty-five miles an hour, which provides for what? A thirty mile an hour design speed?
Yes.
And so that accordingly, then. The required stopping site distance from the proposed site drive would be. Two hundred feet based on ASHTO standards, right?
That sounds uh. Correct. I don't recall off the top of my head, but.
Right, and and. I'm sorry, Eric, I apologize. What?
I I I'm sorry. I says that sounds reasonable.
And um, and based on uh. What I reviewed in terms of the documentation that uh, you and Bowman provided. That there's only uh, the distance of eighty-three and a half. Feet proposed, looking to the left. Towards westbound Lincoln Place traffic and only sixty-six feet proposed, looking to the right towards eastbound traffic. Does that sound right?
That was measured at the. Um, well, the plans. Show is measured from the right-of-way line.
Right, but 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 if you measure, if you measure pursuant to the ASHTO standards. Which I I believe you originally did, to your credit, in your report. That it's demonstrated that there's only eighty-three and a half feet proposed. Looking to the left towards westbound Lincoln Place traffic and only, I think it's like sixty-six feet. Proposed looking to the right towards eastbound traffic. Does that refresh your recollection as to what you put in your report?
I don't, I don't recall the specific numbers in the report. I know that Mr. Waltz. Uh, concurred that there was sufficient uh, site distance. Um, it's really a two-step process because you have to. Stop and check for pedestrians before you stop and check for cars. Um, and uh. You know. Functionally, the edge of the traveled way is about eight feet in front of the curb line because there's on-street parking. So the traveled. Way is eight feet in front. So the driver's eye is actually. Uh, about halfway through the driveway from, and if you're at that location. You have more than two hundred feet in either direction. I don't remember the numbers that we published. Either on the plans or in our report.
Right, but that's not what you just described in in inching out, I guess. All the way into the right-of-way. That's not pursuant to to ASHTO standards for stopping distance, correct?
Well, I know. I I didn't say that we were inching out. What I said was, it was a two-stage process. You have to stop and make sure that you don't hit a pedestrian before you cross the sidewalk. But then, you know, and that's where the stop sign is placed. Um, because we can't place the stop sign in the middle of the apron. Uh, we place it so that people stop before they conflict with. A pedestrian. Um, but they, they. Um, strict reading of the ASHTO rule would place the driver's eye for that fourteen and a half feet back in the middle of the apron.
Right. And. The ASHTO standards don't contemplate you moving up. Into the sidewalk area and past the stop line. Depicted on the plan for the driver to see past the adjacent building corners, correct?
ASHTO specifies that you measure at fourteen and a half feet back. From the edge of the traveled way. It doesn't get into other, you know, what the particulars are. Of, you know, a more urban environment.
Sure.
Is a general guideline for where do you measure? Intersect or.
Stopping site distance, that's right. And and with regard to uh, the pedestrians that that you mentioned, you know, given that this is across from a a busy train station. And the po- and next door, post office. Um, has there been any? Studies to your knowledge conducted um, on behalf of the applicant in terms of pedestrian activity? In terms of busier times, less busy times, number of pedestrians, peak hour, et cetera. Associated with, you know, train station, post office, or, you know, commercial activity in the area?
No.
And. With regard to um. The, your comment just a moment ago about, you know, that they can, you know, move out into into the right-of-way because there's there's parking it there. Um, what if, what if there's no cars parked there? Or if they're, if they're leaving the spaces?
Hey, hey.
Are you blocking, like if somebody is stopping to look both ways? And and you got a a parked car right there that's trying to get out, you're you're blocking that car from. Moving, right?
Well, if you stop on the apron. To to look in both directions and somebody is leaving an on-street parking space. You're not in conflict with them because you haven't entered into the baby.
Right. Um. And with regard to your, other than the studies that you submitted. Uh, in twenty-seventeen and twenty-eighteen, you haven't conducted any further studies, correct?
Unfortunately, for the past fourteen months, uh, I could do parking studies, but I don't think they'd be very useful.
Right. Um, and nothing prior to that time either, right?
No, our our uh, initial engagement was it, was in twenty-seventeen.
And. The. Issue of um. Other than the overnight parking that you testified or didn't testify to, as the case may be. Um, since that time of your testimony, you haven't acquired any additional knowledge as to any process or procedure. Uh, associated with getting a a parking permit for a municipal lot either during the day or at night, correct?
No, I haven't.
And um. You, with regard to the, the four, going back to the forty-seven spaces that are required under R S I S. Um, you know, you stated. As part of your testimony earlier in this application, that. The proposed parking ratio, one space per um, unit. Uh, has been successfully used in other, I think you said other suburban municipalities with proximity. To uh, public transit. Or the availability of municipal parking facilities in in a downtown setting. to uh public transit or the availability of municipal parking facilities in in a downtown setting. Did you recall saying that?
I don't know if I use those exact words. I said.
Or something along those lines.
I think my testimony was that uh it for this particular site in its given location um and the surroundings, one space per unit is appropriate.
Um, do you have any studies that you can um either provide the board or site to to support where a parking ratio of uh one space per unit has been successful, including in a downtown setting, where there's a train station?
I don't know that there's anything specific to this, to this exact uh condition. Alls I will say is that the Borough's Traffic Consultant um was uh uh you know, supported this position and thought that it was an appropriate design as well. Um, and he he quoted some some of the uh uh New Jersey Transit Studies and so on, but.
Right, I mean, I've 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 I heard all that and I've seen all that, but what I've never seen is a study that's determined that even in the busiest of train stations in a downtown, that one space per unit is um not only acceptable, but it has but it has worked as a part of an as-built study. I've never seen it. Have you?
Um, I can't say that I have or haven't.
So yeah, so then, you know, you would say that no published study, at least to your knowledge, uh, whether it's I T E D P or anywhere, that one space per unit is adequate even for transit-oriented development, correct?
Um. Off the top of my head, it's actually, can you repeat the question? I'm sorry.
Sure. The question, the question was that you're not, you can't cite to, or you're not aware of any published study that has concluded that one space per unit is adequate even for transit-oriented development.
Um. No, I can't, not tonight, not sitting here.
And um Eric, did you take into account, and and just because I've experienced this before with other applications, um, you know, near or across from train stations, um, how, you know, the the train station drop-off and pickup impact would impact this driveway? Because the 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 train stations directly across the street, you have a sidewalk on on your side coming off of um through Main Street, and whether it's Uber, Lyft, taxi, you know, personal drop-off and 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 pickup, kiss-and-ride, whatever you want to call it. Have you done any evaluation of that as the as the traffic consultant on this application?
Specifically, no, it's an existing public street.
Right, but I'm saying, um, even the times, you know, pre-COVID era, that you did uh your evaluations, um, where where was the drop-off and pickup for the train station in the morning, you know, in the peak hour morning and peak hour late afternoon? Where where is that taking place, if you know?
We didn't study that because that wasn't relevant to the to the scope of our study.
And um are you aware that the the transit parking in the area was studied, you know, um back in, I think it was two thousand and five, where there were estimates in.
Mr. Simon, you're testifying. You can ask him if he knows if it was studied. You can't say, are you aware? Because that implies testimony.
Mister.
Please ask questions. Don't testify about what you you do or don't know yourself. Ask him what he knows, if he knows.
Mr. I'm I'm setting a foundation so I can ask him the proper question.
No, no, no. You said, are you aware that something was studied? That implies that something was studied and you.
Okay, are 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 you aware whether transit parking was studied back in two thousand and five regarding future trends and demands?
I'm not aware, no.
And you're not aware um whether that study provided any estimates for future parking demands, including um demand or shortfall at the Madison Train Station?
Gary, you're muted.
You're muted.
Mr. Simon, you said that study. We don't know if there's a study. If you want to present a witness to say there's a study, more power to you, but.
Is he aware of a study that.
You said, are you aware of that, that that study? What study? We don't know.
It, Mr. Keller, are you aware of a study that discussed projected demands or shortfalls for parking at the Madison Train Station? Yes or no? Eric? Are you aware of any study?
No.
Yeah. Um, Mr. Chairman Santora, I have no further questions for Mr. Keller. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, um, well, we've already gone to the public and completed that part, right? So I think, what should we talk about next?
Um, let's ask Mr. Wilson, what else he.
Yeah.
I know he's committed to bring Mr. Phillips back at the June ten meeting. Do you know, Peter, at this point, if you intend to, would that conclude your affirmative presentation subject any, you know, reservation rebuttal, obviously?
Yes.
The answer is yes, that Phillips will conclude it, subject to rebuttal.
Yeah, subject to a brief closing and a possible rebuttal.
All right.
I desperately to avoid.
Okay, and we are aware, you've confirmed that Mr. Phillips should be available on June ten, which is the board's next regular meeting.
Which which I'm not available at, and I've made that very, very clear.
And we're aware of that and.
Well, just 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 to be also clear that um Mr. uh Pontier, Mr. Wolfson's associate, sent an email like you referenced earlier, Gary, yesterday, asking me about three dates for a special meeting to be able to bring Mr. Phillips back for purposes of cross-examination. He asked me about three dates. Two of them.
But he doesn't speak for the board.
And I'm not suggesting that, Mr. I'm not suggesting that at all, of course not, right? I'm just telling you factually, but transpired.
I'm aware of that, and I replied and said, our next meeting is June sixth. Now, what's your prior commitment that you can't go there on June ten?
Wait, let me just, let me just say that we have been extremely accommodative over the last five or six meetings, to the point where this board is doing meetings every two weeks to keep up. And the public has been disadvantaged. They've been waiting because this hearing has been taking a lot of time. And we prioritize around mainly, I think, around your schedule, Mr. Simon, and uh, we want to have this meeting on June ten, and we need you to be there. So what I would say is if you have another commitment, find somebody else to do that or find somebody else to come here. Because on June tenth, we want to proceed.
Mr. Santora, let me, can I please respectfully, just just for purposes of the record, this is the seventh hearing on this application in less than four months. Do I think the board has been accommodating to me? Absolutely, they have. I have no um objection to that. They've been, you've been fantastic. Okay? That being said, I have provided, and in within twenty-four hours of being asked on numerous occasions, alternate dates, a number of dates, when I am available. In fact, I canceled the meeting that I had for tonight. If you recall, I said I wasn't even available tonight, but I will rearrange my schedule to be available for tonight. And I said that a month and a half ago.
Well, we need you, we need you at the June tenth regular meeting of this board, and we expect you to be there. So I want you to make an accommodation for us to be there, and we want to continue this application and bring it to a conclusion. So we'd like you to be there, complete whatever cross-examinations you need to do of the planner. And then if you're going to present a planner, uh, objector case, then let's get started on that.
Get started on that when? On June tenth?
June ten.
The the point is, Mr. Simon, the second Tuesday is the meat board's regular meeting. It's been on the calendar for years. It was on the calendar in January when you accepted this engagement.
There's been numerous times.
See when the regular meetings are before. So the the board has a prior commitment. What's your prior commitment that you keep telling us?
Mr. Mr. Hall, this application itself, and I understand how busy this board is, and I know I have boards, we're on the Board Attorney for Board of Adjustment, and we're just as busy. It's unbelievable. That being, that being said, uh, for this particular application, there has been special meetings scheduled by the um by this board for this applicant in lieu of regular meetings, and the regular meetings were devoted to residential applications. So that's that's what the the premises of the reason why I have another commitment on on June tenth.
Well, that was a stupid assumption then, because our regular meeting is June.
Okay. And and just keep in mind, of course, that the applicant has been accommodated, and at the applicant's witnesses have been accommodated in terms of their respective schedules as well, so.
And that's normal, and we, but Mr. Wilson sent us a letter. I haven't read it yet, but Peter, why don't you tell us what your position is?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to be brief, and uh the letter's been referred to, and I apologize, it was sent in late. We're all doing the best we can uh under difficult circumstances. Um, just briefly, uh, for the record, because I fully expect that if we are fortunate enough to get an approval here, there will be an appeal. So for the record, I'd just like to speak a little bit to these issues. There's a case called Lincoln Heights versus Cranford Planning Board, three fourteen N J Super three sixty-six. It was held where objectors had an opportunity to cross-examine witnesses in favor of an application on most days of a hearing. The fact that a particular witness was not available on the last day did not deprive the objectors of their right cross-examining and did not invalidate the board decision on the application. Mr. Simon has indicated an intention to put on an objection case with at least one witness. He has requested many continuances or alternate scheduling dates to accommodate his schedule so that he can put on his case. A denial of an objector's request for a continuance should be viewed based on the circumstances at hand. Reasonable requests should be approved, and in fact, they have been approved in this particular matter. However, not all requests must be granted, and a request must be reasonable. Given Mr. Simon's multiple requests for continuances, including on regularly scheduled meeting dates, and giving his association with a law firm with other attorneys that can appear on his firm client's behalf, any further continuance requests are unreasonable. It's clear that the board and the applicant provided Mr. Simon with several accommodations and worked to make sure he had an opportunity to participate in the hearing process. I would just note, Mr. Simon indicated that the applicant has been accommodated. The hearing is the board and the applicant's hearing. The objectors are entitled to participate in a meaningful way, and they certainly have. There must be a point, though, where Mr. Simon's continued requests for continuations are no longer reasonable and should be denied, particularly when the applicant has already completed its direct testimony. Mr. Simon took on this matter, fully aware that the board holds its regularly scheduled meetings on the second Thursday of each month. Nonetheless, he has been unable to attend two of the four regularly scheduled meetings from March through June, resulting in a delay in the board's processing of the application. As a New Jersey appellate court stated in Mercurio v. Del Vecchio, just because a person is an objector does not confer an absolute right to have an applicant's matter adjourned due to claimed inability to tend to attend one of the several scheduled hearings. And that's Mercurio v. Del Vecchio, two eighty-five N J Super three twenty-eight. Thank you. That's all I have.
So here's my response. And by the way, that that nice uh Magna Carta that I received from Mr. Wilson was at six twenty-four uh this evening. Okay, number number one, at no time has my opposition or objection or participation in this matter slowed up the board's business.
I disagree. You wasted a lot of time in your questioning.
Thanks, Gary.
I just, I just.
That's for the record. Okay.
You can take that position. I'm sorry I interrupted, but I have to, I can't let you say that and not respond. Okay, have wasted our time in prolonged questioning of no purpose, evident purpose, often.
Yeah, I don't need to respond to that. So I will just remind the board and put on the record, record will speak for itself, including Mr. Hall's comments a moment ago, that under Smith vs. Fairhaven, this is not intended to be an adversarial proceeding. The board is obligated to acquire the facts from the applicant, from the public, and make an informed decision that is in the best interest of both pursuant to the law, including the municipal land use law. Nowbustaining Mr. Hall's comments, and if there was an objection to a question, I'm assuming it was objected to at the moment. I don't remember too many objections during my question. Is that I have encouraged the board to proceed without me, not to hold things up one bit, not to hold up questioning or commentary from the public. And um I remind this board that the very beginning, uh uh, Mr. Chairman, you appropriately and eloquently stated that certainly, Mr. Simon, we're going to give you appropriate time to, you know, uh, question the witnesses and put on whatever case you want to put on. So that's all I'm asking. I mean, look, the board's going to rule as they're going to rule, and and we'll see how it goes. Um, and and I have full respect for the board. Um, and I'm trying to participate in an appropriate manner, and I believe I've done so, and will continue to do so in respect for the applicant, believe it or not, as well as the board and the professionals. So, you know, whatever your rules, how you rule, but I just wanted to make that, you know, for the record. And, you know, I I promise you that the intentions are well-intentioned in terms of getting the best possible record uh out of this proceeding in re- in respect for the applicant and respect for the board.
Well, I I'm still curious as to what you you or your applicant, your, excuse me, your clients are seeking here. I I still don't understand what, call it the end game, what what you're looking for. You haven't, you don't seem to ask, haven't seemed to ask for anything. What what do you want to achieve? I mean, we're we're looking at going into the eighth meeting, and we have accommodated you, and you haven't, I think, well, I should say, I think you should come to our meeting on the tenth. I want to, I want to start the objector case on that day, so I want to wind things up. I don't want to wait another four to five weeks to continue this. This, that'll be the eighth meeting.
Yeah.
We're not, we're not going to do this for a year. I could tell you right now. We've got to get it going. We're heading into the summer. So I think if you come on June ten, we could get that going. I don't I don't see a reason why you can't make, you still haven't told us why. Or why you can't send somebody. Why don't you send somebody else?
I I think it's prejudicial to all of a sudden have an attorney, another attorney who's not been part of this proceeding to have to get up to speed and participate via the cross-examination of witnesses and presenting.
Have somebody else cover your other thing, whatever that is. But I want to do it on the tenth, and um I think all I can ask the board, but how's the board feel? Diane?
No, I think it's really important at this point to move this along. This has been gone on, what was, what are we at, seven or eight meetings, we said? We do want a good record. We want a, to make the best possible decision that we can make as a board, keeping in mind the best interests of everyone in the town, but we need to move this along.
And Diane is our vice chair. Do you do you agree that we have um accommodated Mr. Simon?
I I do believe that is true, and, you know, I certainly appreciate that, you know, if you're the primary on this, that you have more knowledge of it than someone else, but let's face it, we all have worked in situations where somebody else covers meetings or projects for us when, for whatever reason, we can't be there. And, you know, there comes a point where we have to do that. I, you know, I mean, I have people I work with that cover things for me. I cover things for them. It does not mean that things go badly. It means that we work together and come to a good conclusion. But at this point, we hit this, as Joe said, this can't go on for a year. We need to move this along.
And can I, can I, can I just say that I, just so the record's clear, and I'll say it for fourteen, twenty times, the board has.
Only once would be enough. Thank you.
The board, the board has been accommodating to me. I'm not denying that for a second.
Do any board members feel differently? No, so you've just heard it from the board. We want you here on June ten, so I I think you should make some sort of accommodations uh for your other client, whatever that is, and you should appear then if you feel that that's. whatever that is, and you should appear then if you feel that that's your best, your client's best interest relative to this application.
Thank you.
Let's carry to June 10th. No further notice required.
Seven thirty again, sir?
Yes, yes, seven thirty, Zoom.
So that's our regular meeting, second Thursday, tenth of June.
And I presume Joe will be the first item of business, maybe the only one. We don't know.
Okay, so we want to wind up and then Mr. Simon, we're expecting you to present your case at that meeting.
I, I'm, I'm just letting you know respectfully that I will probably have a number of questions for Mr. Phillips. But I will have my planner or, or, or somebody will be here on behalf of my client with the planner.
No, the, the, yeah, the plan is that you will cross the applicant's planner and then when that's over with, then we'll proceed with your, your case.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board members. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Thank you, Mr. Simon.
Thank you.
Okay, it's eight forty. I just give you one second here to get my ten pound pile over here and get the other ten pound pile out.
Joe, I'll be leaving you. Board on, good night, everybody.
Yeah, have a good trip, Russell.
Okay, thank you.
When are you leaving again?
Friday.
Okay.
Well, travel safely.
Will do. I'm still masking up.
Double mask. Thanks, thanks, Russell.
Okay, thanks. Bye bye.
Okay. A minute to get my blood pressure.
Will you be starting with the two that were carried, the two that were carried last week? Or are you going to go by the agenda?
Which ones did we carry from last time?
Um, Sandberg Z twenty one dash zero eleven and Gianpiaella Z twenty one zero twelve.
I want to start with, we'll go with the, the order we have here. Because I, I think.
Give me one.
It's not going to make a big difference.
Okay, give me one second to promote.
But I'm going to be calling up, we've got to readmit everybody.
So Mr. Foster is here.
Awesome. Welcome back, Jim.
Yeah, I'm back in. Are you there?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, great.
So this is kind of case number Z twenty one zero zero six, Ben and Jamie Sealy. Block forty six oh one lot sixty one, old greenhouse lane. Applicants are seeking permission to construct a rear yard deck and outdoor fireplace, a portion of the deck covered. And a portion uncovered in our one single family residential zone requiring to be for maximum building coverage and maximum impervious block coverage. Okay, I see they're with us. Welcome.
Yeah, let me, Ben and Jamie, let me swear you in first and then we'll move forward. If you raise your right hand, you saw me swear testimony you're about to give will be the truth. You have to, you're muted. I'm mute.
Got to unmute.
Should be in the upper right. Okay.
Yeah.
Say yes, if that's what you need to say. Thank you. All right, real quickly.
Mr. Hall, Mr. Hall, um, there architect, Mr. Lyons is also present this evening. If you want to swear him in.
Oh, okay, sure. Mr. Lyons, raise your right hand. You saw me swear testimony you're about to give will be the truth.
I do.
Okay, and you are architect?
I'm a licensed architect, yes.
Thank you. And let's see, we have, let's first identify what we have document wise, then we'll proceed. We have a zoning denial letter of December ten, twenty twenty. That'll be B one. And I know you sent me a list, but I forgot to print it.
I have, we have.
Do you want, do you want to go through what you have? That might be quicker.
Site plans consisting of three sheets dated twelve, three, twenty twenty, prepared by Mr. Lyons. That will be A one. And A two will be color photos consisting of four sheets collectively.
Uh, what did you say the date for the site plan was?
Twelve, three, twenty twenty.
All right, three sheets, right?
That is correct.
Okay. And then you said the, the photos.
Color photos.
We have four of them. They can be collected.
That is correct.
Okay, that's fine. Joe, it's on you now.
Okay, well, welcome. Um, that was probably tough to follow what you just heard before this. Just relax, just relax. And what we want you to do is just tell us about your application and then we'll get into it, okay?
Sure. All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for giving us the audience tonight. My name is Ben Sealy. This is my wife, Jamie Sealy. We've lived at eight old greenhouse lane since twenty sixteen with our now three lovely daughters, our oldest of which will be starting at Torrey J in first grade next year. We love the town. We're very grateful to be part of the community and we hope to be here for the long term. You know, one thing that became apparent to us during the pandemic last year is that we don't really have a, you know, a comfortable place to be outside, the way that our house is situated. You know, there's really direct sunlight at all, at all points during the day. And no matter how we, you know, set up umbrellas or whatever, we, you know, it'd be very difficult to, to be outside in the summer. We'd, you know, been talking to John about potentially redoing our deck anyway. It's, you know, at a, at a point where it potentially would have needed to be replaced. And, you know, given this issue we were having with direct sunlight, we, we wanted to look into a, you know, a covered space where we could, you know, have some, some shade protection on, on the deck.
Okay, good. So would you like your, your architect to take us through that?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Can I share my screen?
Yeah.
Right. As Ben and Jamie said, we are proposing a, to enlarge the existing rear yard deck. What the drawing you're all looking at is drawing C one point O, which is the existing and proposed site plan. This is the same drawing that was submitted to the board previously. On the sheet, just to orient you again, on the left side is the existing site plan. And then on the right side is the proposed. We also have the zoning chart, which is, has all the zoning calculations. I'll now zoom in to the existing site plan. This is the existing site plan. On the site plan, again, to orient you, this is old greenhouse lane. The Sears home is on, is on the cul-de-sac. So the road comes in and meets the cul-de-sac and their home is, is number eight on the left side. The existing home is shown here. This is, there's a three-car garage on the left side of the house and then there's an existing wood deck at the rear of the home. The variances required for our project would be for, there are two variances. Lot coverage, we are proposing twenty one point nine percent where twenty percent is required. Building coverage, we're proposing eleven point five percent where ten percent is required. There is a hardship for this project. The hardship is the unique shape of the property, which is created by the cul-de-sac and the orientation of the existing hall. The, the property is on the cul-de-sac, but the driveway on the left side here, where you can see on the existing, the driveway doesn't go perpendicular to the cul-de-sac. It actually goes to the furthest point on the property and makes its way out to where old greenhouse street is now. The three-car garage, which is where the driveway brings you to, is eighty one point three two feet from the street. The front yard setback for the, obviously, his home is fifty, is fifty feet. So we're an additional thirty one feet back to get to the driveway, which leads to additional lot coverage. The driveway on its own is two thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet of coverage, which equals nine point two percent of lot coverage on the property. On the right side, we're looking at the proposed site plan. In the lighter hatch, this is the area of proposed deck, which is not covered. On the right side, which is a darker hatch, this is the proposed covered portion of the wood deck. Now moving on to the floor plan, sheet A one point O. Again, to orient you on the sheet, this is the front door of the home. This is the existing three-car garage, which will lead you out into the driveway and then you would head this way to head out to the cul-de-sac on it, on our old greenhouse. Moving to the rear of the property, this is our proposed deck. I'll zoom in. This is our proposed deck. This section is the open non-covered section, and this is the covered section of the deck, which is shown with a seating area and a, and a fire pit area. Now moving on to the rear, proposed rear elevation. As we look at the rear elevation, I'd also like to refer to photographs, which were previously submitted. This is the photograph of the existing rear of the home as it stands today. You have to orient you, this is the, this is a door into the mudroom. The, this is the three-car garage. This is a sliding door that goes into the kitchen, and this is the existing deck. One of our goals in extending the deck is to extend the deck over to the door of the mudroom. Currently, you need to go from this deck down a set of stairs and back up a set of stairs to get from the mudroom into the kitchen or vice versa. Our goal would be to bring this deck over so that both doors access the deck on the same level, and we can have one set of stairs coming from the garage side to go enter up into either the mudroom or into the kitchen. Referring back to the architectural drawings, this is now the proposed relevation. This is where we're bringing the deck all the way across to now, this is that mudroom door. These are the, where we're proposing to locate the new steps that you, as you come from the garage around your home, you can walk up those steps and either go to the mudroom door or go into the, the sliding glass door, which they give you into the kitchen. This is the proposed covered area of the deck. It's an open structure. It would be a roof supported by columns. It's thirteen point five feet tall to the highest point, which is below the second floor windows. And this is the area where the chimney is shown for the fire pit area. Moving back to the photographs, I'd like to show you the existing right side of the home. This is the existing right side elevation of the home with the existing wood deck shown. We're proposing to extend this, this is the location of that proposed cover deck, which would extend an additional nine foot seven inches from where it stands today. Going back to that drawing, this is now looking at the same view of the home. This is where the proposed deck would be extended nine foot seven inches and we would cover that section of the deck with a roof structure. I would like to, Mr. Chairman, would I be able to show an exhibit?
Sure.
What should I label this exhibit? One A?
Did we end up with A three, Fran? Was that the last one?
Yes, it would be, uh, need to be marked A three.
No, I thought, did we have three? Wasn't the.
No, we had A one and A two.
Okay, that's fine. A three then.
Okay. I'll mark this as exhibit A three and there's a date line on today's date, May thirteenth, two thousand twenty one.
Yeah, and you'll just have to provide a copy to the secretaries for the file.
I will.
Afterwards, whenever it's on tonight.
This drawing is, is very similar to the proposed first floor plan we showed previously. However, I think it more clearly shows you the, what we're proposing, how this dash line represents the existing deck today. This is the existing deck. We're proposing nineteen foot four inches of, of deck here, which would be uncovered. And then this is that additional nine foot seven inches of the proposed covered deck. Moving back to the site plan. And in summary, we are conforming all setbacks. The red line is, shows our front yard setback, side yard setbacks, rear yard setbacks. The, the proposed one is conforming on all, on all setbacks. The end building coverage is only one story and it's an open air structure. It doesn't add any interior volume. Because of this, we believe that it does not impair the intent of the zoning ordinance. There's an existing landscape buffer to neighboring properties. The existing residence is not conforming. Our proposed addition is at one point five percent overbuilding coverage and one point nine percent over for lot coverage. We believe that while a small coverage variance is required, it allows for a covered deck area created, which is in scale and in harmony with the character of the neighborhood. And for those reasons, we feel that the relief granted for the proposed covered deck would be without substantial detriment to the public good and will not substantially impair the intent of the zoning laws. We'd be happy to address any questions.
Uh, how, how does the board feel about this? Any questions from the board?
Looks like a very nice project to me and I think it's a fairly, it's a fairly modest addition in terms of the, in terms of the calculations. But I think it will make a big difference for the family. Looks nice.
And I may have missed it, but where does the impervious coverage come from if it's all raised deck that's being.
It's always because of the roof. Because it has a roof over it, it adds to the burden.
So how, how much roof area is that, that you're adding?
The, I'll just zoom in on the chart. We're adding three hundred and ninety square feet.
I, I had one quick question. The, the covered deck, if you look at the elevation, that's completely open. It has a roof, but. It won't be enclosed with window screens, anything like that?
Those screens are windows.
Cause I, I'm looking at the footprint. It looked like you have furniture in there. I just wondered about that.
Well, yeah, it's outdoor furniture, like you would have on a deck that'll be protected by the roof.
But it's open and as on the elevation. That's what I make sure. Thank you.
Are, are you going to have gutters on that?
Yes.
And where's that going to go?
It'll tie into the existing drainage.
Okay. Is that shown anywhere on the plan?
No, that would be something we would submit as part of the, with, with the. Lock rate, I would go with the, the engineering department and see what they require.
Yeah, I mean, you know, by ordinance, it's four hundred square feet, but three ninety is basically four hundred square feet. And I was figuring that you probably had dry wells anyway with this house, so I would think that you would tie that in. That was my only concern.
Well, the board can require that if you think it's important and you should rather than, because you're right, it's technically under the mandatory requirement, but for variance, you can require it as a condition.
Yeah, at three ninety is essentially four hundred.
The, the existing home, Ben and Jamie, I don't know if you could tell me, the existing home or the, the gutters tied into underground piping or do they spill out into grave?
It's a mix. Some portions of the roof line go into underground draining. Some, some go out onto the driveway.
Okay. Uh, just a question for the board. If those, if the underground drain, if we can tie into the existing underground, if that goes to daylight, would that please the board, or is there a drywall being required?
What would go to daylight?
If the, if, if, if the existing underground leaders, where they tie in, if they are able to go to daylight, can we tie into that same system or do we need to install a drywall?
I'm confused. You said you, you're talking two different things, I thought.
I guess, well, I guess what I'm asking is if, if there's not an existing drywall on the property.
Yeah.
And but, but the existing, some of the existing gutters and downsides are tied into underground pipes. Can we tie into that same network of pipes?
Well, we can listen to the board, but my sentiments would be essentially the, the ordinance will require to have a drywall, you know, to tie it into an existing drywall, a created drywall.
Yeah.
At four hundred square feet. And what I'm arguing here is that you're essentially at four hundred. Three ninety to me is the same thing, right?
And if you don't have a drywall now, it's even more important to put some, any additional stormwater into a new drywall, I would think.
Right. I mean, when you think about our role as a board, there, there are reasons for us to be able to grant relief from the ordinance, the law, right? One is a hardship and I'm not really seeing a hardship here that would warrant that kind of relief. The other one is, you know, did it, that's, did it benefits outweigh the detriments to the community? That's kind of, that's a tough one, too. So what I'm trying to do is minimize any negative impact by having water spilling onto the ground.
Sure. I think we'd be happy to do whatever, wherever the board would like in terms of the flooding water.
Well, it's. How, how's the board feel?
You know, Joe, I think your idea of, if they have an existing drywall that can take the capacity, fine, pipe it into the. Pipe it into the, that drywall. If they don't, they need to add a drywall. I, I, for me, I think that would be very reasonable as a trade off for granting the variance.
Yeah, I agree with that. Uh, I really don't see any hardship with the property, so I would like to see some benefit and, uh, certainly if the. Drywall system is big enough to handle it, then that's fine, but if not, you know, I'd agree with anyone.
And Dennis, are you, you on with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay, why don't you jump in and comment on this?
One, one observation I'd like to make is this is Old Greenhouse Lane and we had a, a recent application. And that home did not have any drywells. Although some of the leader drains did, um, go underground, it was determined that they did not go into a drywall. So with that knowledge and being the same, same subdivision or same development. I think it would be incumbent, I, I think would be reasonable to, um. To require a drywall for the additional impervious cover. And anticipating that, you know, they, they, there may, they might not be any drywall on this property either. Um, unless the owner, um, if you know. Specifically that there is a drywall. And we can consider that, but without knowing the capacity of it or the condition. Um, I think it would be reasonable to require a drywall for the additional impervious cover.
Yeah, I think on that other one that we're talking about, you had to go down thirty six inches or something like that, right?
Yeah, and that was to get to, um.
Get below.
Soils, yeah, to get through the clay layer. That may not be the case here. This is, you know, a little further down on the cul-de-sac. But, um, wherever it needs to get to, to get to permeable soils, um, then that can be done really during construction.
Right, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to create foundation there anyway, etc. So.
Right.
So let me just ask, um, the applicants, are, are you okay with creating a drywall? Just so we can move this along?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, so any other topics you want to talk about here? Terry looks pretty good with this. Okay, um. We've kind of deliberated out loud, but does anybody want to add their thoughts to this? No?
I think we've pretty much said it.
Yeah, I think, and so what do I do is open it up to the public Fran to see if there's any. Uh, questions or comments from any neighbors of the public?
Mr. Lyons, can you please, um, stop sharing your screen? I see no hands raised, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so that's good. All right, so. What we're talking about is approving this application as presented, except that there would be requirements for, um. To either have a drywall, construct a drywall or tap into an existing drywall provided that the. Square footage would, uh, not exceed the capacity of that drywall, so. During construction, yeah, you would need to, as you map this out with your construction people, et cetera, is, uh, interface with, I think, the. Borough engineer on the size of the drywall or what you're planning to do to make sure he's satisfied with that. And that would be the condition. Does that sound okay, Gary?
Yeah, and I would, even though what they said, it is not on the plans, I would suggest we expressly note that it can't be enclosed. It could, I think, come back, obviously. Yeah. Absent coming back, they can't enclose the covered deck.
All right, so you can't create a room out of it?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's a, they're all different dynamic then, I would think. As far as the visual, not that they couldn't come back and ask, but. That's a different.
Absolutely. Okay, so we've got to the public, so can we get a, a motion to approve a condition?
Done moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mister. Mister Diania?
Yes.
Miss Driscoll?
Yes.
Mister Fitzsimmons?
Yes.
Doctor Patel?
Yes.
Miss Selko?
Yes.
Mister Santoro?
Yes.
Mister Foster?
Yes.
Okay, congratulations, your application is approved.
Thank you very much.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay, next up is case number, I'm gonna do one more case, then we'll take a break unless you want to take a break now. One more?
Do one, do one and then break.
Okay, I want to be, uh, sensitive to the needs of the board.
Yeah. Thank you, Joe.
Case number Z twenty one zero one one is the next one, Matt and Jen Sandberg. Block thirty eight oh two, lot forty five one oh four, Pomeroy. Road applicants are seeking permission to construct a one-story front addition and the removal of an existing. Front block patio and an R two single-family residential zone requiring relief from maximum impervious lot coverage. Hello, Mister Sandberg, how are you?
Good thing, what are you doing?
Welcome.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, swear Mister Sandberg in. Mister Sandberg, can you raise your right hand? You saw me swear a testimony about to give will be the truth.
Yes.
Thank you. Fran, do you wanna?
Hold on, um, you'd also need to swear in Mister Bensley.
Oh, is he here? I didn't, missed it.
Okay.
He was promoted to a panelist.
Nick, can you turn your video on so we can see you? Maybe he's connecting. For one, why don't we mark the exhibits and hopefully he's connecting? If, if he testifies, we have to see him, unfortunately, that's. That's the rule from on high. I can start, we have a zone of denial letter March third, uh, that'll be, uh, B one.
Um, there's also A one, uh, survey prepared by Ampol Survey. Date it twelve fifteen twenty.
B one survey.
No, that's A one.
Oh, you're right, I marked B one.
And A two is the site plan prepared by Nick Bensley, architect, when she did it two nineteen twenty twenty one.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, let me swear in, uh, Nick, if you'd raise your right hand. Do you saw me swear a testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Okay. Right, we can go, Joe.
All right, uh, Mister Bensley, welcome back. It's been a while since.
I think the last time I saw you guys was the last meeting pre-zoom, so.
Now, what didn't we see you recently?
Uh, I had nothing to zoom meeting with the Madison board, but I was at your last meeting, I think, in March last year.
Oh, you're just in the audience, anyway, okay.
All right, well, we missed you. Haven't seen you for a while. Welcome.
You as well, hope to see you soon.
Okay, uh, Mister Sandberg, do you want to lead off and just give us a, an overview real quick or say a few words?
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Um, first of all, thank you for hearing us tonight. Um, I am here with my wife, she's off camera, she's. Uh, taking care of our baby. We actually had a baby five weeks ago, uh, which is gonna kind of tie into the, to the whole request here, but, um, we.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Uh, we purchased the home, uh, the end of January. Um, you know, with the baby coming along, uh, we kind of saw the need to, uh, so, so, uh, just to give background, I guess, on the, on the whole request, requesting the variance, uh, in order to. Uh, bump out, uh, one of the rooms in the front of the house by about ten feet. Um, so after we purchased the home, we kind of saw the need with the baby, um, you know, and, and. God willing, hopefully, a growing family over time, uh, to extend the living space. That is directly adjacent to our kitchen. Uh, you know, we like families a lot of time in the kitchen, cooking, cleaning, preparing meals, um, all that kind of stuff. Um, you know, so we wanted to create a space that could accommodate, uh, you know, a play area for the kids, living area for the family, uh, as well as a table and chairs. Uh, for family dinners, that kind of stuff, something that's pretty important to us. Um, and, you know, most importantly, have that area be within direct line sight of the kitchen so that, you know, when we're in there kind of doing our thing. Preparing the meals for the family, all that kind of stuff, uh, we can keep an eye on the kids, make sure everybody stays. Um, you know, all that kind of stuff, so that, that, that's, that's really kind of the, the background on the request, um, why we. Why we want to make the renovation, um, and I, uh, Nick can, can walk you guys through the details of the plan.
Okay, that's great. Mister Bensley?
Hi, um, yes, thank you, and I want to, uh, compliment the board on their persistence in trying to get caught up with everything. It's been a, been a grind.
It's a challenge, put it that way, so.
Sure it is, and I think it's gonna continue, I believe, from what Danny was telling me. Anyway, uh, we are here tonight really primarily trying to get a leave for impervious building coverage. The property is currently non-conforming right now, twenty five percent is allowed in the R two zone. We are at twenty nine points, uh, twenty five point nine percent, I'm sorry. And I, this is really a product of the rear-facing garage and the driveway that comes around to access it, just did a quick calc on. They had an opportunity to have a side-facing garage or had it been a side-facing garage, we probably eliminated about two and a half percent of our impervious coverage. From the driveway that's required to access the garage from the back. Uh, I, and I am going to maintain that that really is the hardship we have for wanting some relief from previous coverage. Um, had Danny run a review, I cannot tell you why we're point nine percent over. What is currently allowed. There is no history of any previous variances there. I can only presume that probably there was a little terrace work done. Which if you look at the existing site plan, and I don't have these drawings geared, so you'll just have to refer to the drawings. That you have there in the right-hand corner, um, by the title block, there's the existing survey adjacent to it is what we're proposing as an addition. And you'll see there is a small terrace space that's, um, adjacent to the, the deck that's on the back of the house. I presume that was probably done without any permitting and that's probably why we're over impervious coverage right now. We're proposing basically a hundred and sixty square foot addition to the front of the house. If you look at the, uh, my plans have the existing conditions. And adjacent to that are proposed, you will see that we are basically converting an existing dining room. Into a more of a breakfast area with a sitting area that projects out ten feet into the front yard. We conform with the front yard setbacks, which is forty feet in the R two. Our proposed addition is forty three point eight feet. And I just want to just point out a little bit of the streetscape, um, the adjacent houses and you can reference them on the original in our proposed site plan, you'll see the two adjacent houses next to it. Both of those houses project between six and nine feet out in front of the current Sandberg residents, so really our ten feet projection. Is pretty much in line with what the context of that streetscape is, um, and when I say that's six to nine feet. Of the adjacent houses, that is including a four-foot front canopy that's on both of those houses. And I think you can see that in the photographs that we submitted as well. There were a couple streetscapes showing both the two side houses. Our design was really recognizing sort of, if you go look at the elevations in the upper left-hand corner. It's sort of a federal-style house with a really prominent front pediment, uh, the master bedroom is above where we were looking to propose adding on the first floor to create the sitting breakfast area off the kitchen. And rather than try to incorporate a roof that really wasn't in character, either through pitch or type, we might have looked at a hip roof or something like that, we decided to do more of a flat roof. Design with a decorative rail around the top, which I think is very much in character with the neighborhood and the architecture along Pomeroy in general. Our net improving is gain because part of what we're adding on, on the front covers an existing little terrace that might also be contributing to the point nine percent over. What's allowed for impervious, um, and I never really understood what that little terrace was other than a place to sit in the front yard, but we are doing our addition over that. So while we're adding a hundred and sixty square feet for the addition, really our net gain on previous coverage is sixty seven square feet. But we're replacing approximately ninety square feet of, of existing terrace that's there, so it's a related diminutive, diminutive change. Design maintains the general character of the street, I think, does really not impact the zoning intent in any way, either aesthetically. Or driving up impervious coverage significantly. I don't know if there are drywells on that property, um, I did not submit a formal request to the engineer to try to find that. Um, obviously, there was some work done at the house at some point in time. Drainage currently, our intent is just to tie this small addition into the existing downspouts, um. And the existing submerged lines that I imagine go to daylight, the property does slope. Front to rear, so there's a natural pitch down to daylight in the backyard. It's a fairly extensive backyard, so I really don't anticipate any water problems from. Really effectively a sixty seven square foot impervious addition. So happy to answer any questions.
Does the board have any questions?
One quick one, uh, Nick, what's that rectangle in the backyard? I can't read the, um. The description is blurred on my print.
Yeah, mine as well.
You know what that is or do the applicants know?
It's, it's in the right-hand sides.
Yeah, it goes outside the envelope, that's why it is.
Covered something, I believe.
Said terrace, is it terrace? What does it say?
Has a T, but I'm not sure it's terrace.
I don't know even which direction you read from, um.
Yeah, Matt, do you have any idea what that little pad is? I think it might just be a little concrete pad. Um, I was, I have not been in the backyard really all that.
And in front of me, is this in the, in the back of like, kind of like the, the, the edge of the property in the backyard?
On the right-hand side, yeah.
On the deck side.
Yeah, there's, there's a small, you know, similar to the one that's in the front. It's like a, you know, slate padded. Patio sitting area. They called it a secret garden in the, uh, in the, the marketing materials tale. It's, it's just kind of sitting in the back, um.
I believe it's a dry later, that's like the front, probably was done at the same time.
And do you use it, Mister Sandberg?
No.
Yeah, might as well get rid of it. I mean, if people agree, I mean, it's not a big deal.
It's dry later, be easy to take up and it's probably twenty feet, I would guess, of impervious coverage, so that drops or, or increase even significantly more down to forty seven square feet.
Assuming it was counted in the first place.
Yeah.
We don't know, but. I defer to others, it's not a big deal either way.
It's a little that it really makes no particular difference.
Yeah.
It's a good thought, though. I don't, I don't think we have to bother with that.
Yeah, they may want to take it up themselves, but yeah, I agree, it doesn't merit. Requiring anything, okay.
Anybody else? Christine? Could you have some?
Yeah, I just, I was wondering whether we get to preserve the tree.
Um, the tree was talked about early on, uh, it's really close to the house, it's quite old. I think the Sandbergs want to get rid of it regardless of whether they're doing an addition or not. I mean, it's literally like twelve feet. I mean, we could probably do the addition and preserve the tree. Cause it's really only taken up about a quarter of the existing root structure. And it's already, that root structure's already been compromised because it's so close to the house, so I don't think we do damage to the tree, but I, I think the Sandbergs are concerned about it falling on the house.
Yeah, I, I, I think that, that either way, the plan would be to remove the tree, uh, when we did the inspection before we purchased the house. Um, the inspector strongly urged us to, to remove the tree, um, and everybody else that we've actually spoken to subsequent to. To moving into the house has strongly suggested that we remove the tree all for the same reasons that Nick said, because. A lot of it is hanging over the, the roof of the house, uh. It's a, it's a fairly old tree, it's a healthier tree, but it's, it's a fairly old tree. Um, you know, so it's, it's kind of a, a red flag as far as if there's a big storm, it could, it could damage the house pretty badly.
All right.
So I, so I, so I asked that mostly because there's a kind of a well around it. I'm wondering if that's retaining water. And that when you add this addition, maybe that even though it's a minimal incremental addition, whether it impacts how the water reacts in the front yard.
I doubt it's really acting as any kind of little drywall or anything like that, just because I don't think there's a lot of water directed to it from any of the topography on the front, so I think it's really more of a root well. We could certainly utilize it a little bit as a drywall, potentially by just taking that one corner downspout on the addition and dropping it into that and filling it with sand and. Um, soil to level it out, so there isn't a well there, because I don't think the Sandbergs want to have that pit right by the front. Um, front walkway, but we, we could use it to our advantage potentially. Uh, if there's a need to try to mitigate some water runoff. I, I don't really think there is a need to do that, um, but. You know, it's for the board to tell us what they're concerned about.
There is a borough ordinance that we do now, now have a tree removal permit that will need to be applied for.
Understood.
Yeah, and I would, I would say on that is. Read it and see what you need to do. You're, you're, you're all get, allowed to remove certain trees. You have some allowance there, so I would read it first, but, and if it applies, then you need to do that.
It sounds like they could represent that the board has no objection to removal of that tree. It sounds like they could represent that the board has no objection to removal of that tree.
I mean, there's, there's a carve out, if you have a tree that's potentially dangerous. You, you would be allowed, even if it was one that you would have.
I think if you, if it's in the way of an addition approved by the board, I think that may.
Yeah.
Provide a justification, I'm not sure though.
It's very close to the house, but I, I, I don't, it's not that I object to it being removed, I just did wonder if it changed the water dynamic.
Yeah, no, that's fine, so, okay.
Alright, so um. Okay, anybody else?
Nice project, makes sense for the growing family, and I, yes, I approve the idea of having the kids within the sightline from the kitchen, it's very important.
Thank you.
Very soon.
Yep, I support it.
Well, actually, no, we got to do first before we go there, um, we need to open up the republic and see if there's any questions or comments before we deliberate.
There are no hands raised.
There are no hands, okay, Mary Sue.
I, I have no objections.
Okay, Roger.
Yeah, I agree, I like the application, it's hard to believe that the previous coverage is really as low as it is with a garage in the back and then, and the drive. I see very little change and you're moving the, the uh, kind of patio area that's there already, so I, I, I'm, I think the application is just fine.
Anthony?
Yeah, I agree, um, there's, you know, like Roger said, with going. Garage in the back and the driveway, there's not much you can do there for removal and uh. You know, certainly um, somewhat of a hardship there, so I'm supportive.
Yes, I would support it.
Tim?
I'm supportive.
Diane?
No objections.
Okay, I supported as well. They just actually, um, very good application and. I don't see any issue with uh, terms of the protrusion of the. Of the expanded home into the front yard, I don't see that as a problem here. I thought it would be fine, so. Uh, we have no conditions on this, so then I would be looking for a motion.
So moved.
Okay, Roger, second. Who, who said that? Okay, then can we get a roll call?
Mr. Dianio?
Yes.
Mrs. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Yes.
Dr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Salco?
Yes.
Mr. Santoro?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, congratulations, uh, your application's approved.
Thank you.
Good luck too, get some sleep. I've been there, get some sleep.
Yeah, yeah, I hear you very well, loud and clear.
Alright, so. Um, we're gonna just go take a break, five minutes, so cameras and mics off and. Okay, we have everybody back. Okay. Alright, this meeting's back in session. And uh, we have case number Z twenty one oh twelve. Uh, Gian. Paol, please pronounce that for me.
I was gonna try to stop you, but I think I was muted, uh, don't worry about it, uh, Gian Paolella.
Paola.
And thank you for hearing us tonight.
Thank you, alright, so this is block thirty four oh three, lot fifty one one fifty two. Luanica Way, applicant is seeking permission for the paving of existing gravel parking area removal and reconstruction of existing front walkway. We're, the front paper walkways, seven feet by seven feet. Shed four feet, open fence, flagpole, and a decorative house number post in our three single family residential. Requiring relief for maximum previous block coverage, minimum side and rear yards, walkway setbacks.
Why don't I swear in Mr. Pay, Paya Lola, Lola. Right hand, I'm sorry, you sound like a testimony about to give will be the truth.
I do.
Thank you, do you have any witnesses, I mean, you don't have to.
No, I'm, I'm self representing tonight.
Okay, well, that's, that's absolutely fine, okay. Joe, it's on you.
Okay, do we have any materials?
So I did, uh, in the packet that I provided, I hope, oh, sorry.
Alright, there are exhibits that need.
I'm sorry.
B one, the denial letter from Danny Bucklue dated three three twenty twenty one. A one property survey prepared by John Simmons PLS dated ten thirteen twenty twenty. A two color photos, one sheet.
That seems to be it. Okay, we can add.
Alright, good. Okay, so why don't you tell us about your application?
I appreciate it, first of all, thank you uh, to everybody on the board, um, I know you guys are incredibly busy. And uh, now this is my third time witnessing that myself, so uh. Seriously, it means a lot to us that you're hearing our case, so thank you. This kind of came about, uh, my family, we're, you know, growing, uh, my wife and I moved to Madison about two years, two, over two years ago. And um, we now are a family of four, I have two young girls, uh, the youngest is just about four months. And my older is just turning two in June. So since we've been here, you know, the uh, the original introduction to the, to the home was really, uh, we weren't buying the home for what it was. We were buying the home for what it could be, uh, so in the, you know, a little over two years, we've been here, we've done. A lot of work to the home and the property, um, we put a lot of time, effort, uh, and money into renovating. And upgrading the conditions, so as of, you know, to, to date, uh, really, we've had. Two renovation projects that completely one hundred percent changed all the new, to new plumbing, new electric. All the windows, brand new HVAC system up, upstairs, downstairs, uh, two and a half new bathrooms, new kitchen. And it's, we just most recently in this, uh, our renovation project, we enclosed our screened porch. Um, to add a little bit more space, which, you know, we converted into our playroom for our daughter, uh, daughters, uh, now. So um, you know, a lot of, a lot of work has been done to the, to the project, uh, to the house, the property. And you know, since we've, you know, moved in, we absolutely couldn't be happier with the town. I myself actually am from Rhode Island originally, wasn't really familiar with Madison, I actually purchased the house before my, my wife even stepped foot into it. Um, you know, since we've been in Madison, we absolutely love the town, I, I can't say anything better. I want to be here for a long time to come, uh, which is also why I'm saying I hope this goes well. Because I, you know, we want to do right by the town, right by the board, uh, whatever you guys feel is, is right. So the next phase after the interior and the, and the home itself was tackled was really the outside. And that's coming more into focus now, as I mentioned, my daughter being two, you know, she's running around like crazy, you know, it's, it's, it's fine on a good day. But um, you know, when we're outside and especially in the summertime, you know, COVID times, now we've realized we're spending a lot more time at the house and outside. Um, so I provided some photos to the board, just so you guys can see the condition of the exterior. Again, a little neglected because we've been focusing on the actual, you know, interior of the home. However, uh, this is kind of the situation that we were left with from the previous tenants, previous owners. Our fence is practically falling down, our patios are, you know, misplaced and kind of uh. A little dangerous to, to be frank, and uh, the yard is, has really, uh, it's been one giant weed actually since we've been here. So the, the focus of our efforts now are on the exterior. And um, I think one of the, you know, kind of faults of being a new homeowner, I would say, that I'm learning. Uh, is that I didn't necessarily know all the, the factors going into it. So one of the details our realtor left out until after we purchased the home was actually that it was. Um, under the minimum property size for our zone, for our three zone, we were actually under the minimum property size by about six percent. Which when I saw that, I, I didn't really take it into account, but it's actually very important now as we pursue this variance. Because as, uh, you know, you mentioned before, everything is hindering, hinging on, uh, you know, contingent on the previous to impervious coverage ratio. Um, so from the description, that's primarily what we're focused on here, everything kind of affects that. Maybe save for the fence, but everything else is really affecting the coverage ratio. So the notes that I provided to you guys, um, I reread through them and I just wanted to reemphasize, I think, one thing that maybe I didn't. As, you know, say as clearly as I should have, which is safety. This, that's what everything that I'm inquiring with you guys is about, it's safety for our children because of the road we live on. If any of you had a chance to visit the property, uh, we live right on a busy intersection at the corner of Woodland Road and Luanica Way. And um, you know, that's really the, uh, the fear for both my wife and I is that as the kids get to the point, you know, now with my, my two year old. And our future uh, daughter will be getting to the point where they're running around, um, having their easy access to the road is what we want to limit. So I broke, kind of wanted to break out the requests for the board into two categories, kind of the needs and the nice to haves. Because I gave you a broad lineup of requests tonight, but the needs start with our gravel turnaround. And from the uh, survey that provided, I kind of want to just focus on what it was prior. So prior to the turnaround, we live in a, in a home that uh, spits out onto Luanica Way. And so it was only a one way in, one way out type of uh, driveway. And where it spits out, there's actually a protected right at certain times on Woodland Road. So if you're looking at the bottom portion of the survey, that's Woodland Road, the right hand turn. Is directly into our line of our driveway, and so there was multiple times where we would have to back out of our driveway. Into a blind turn where there's, you know, folks turning right. So um, I actually heard one chairperson mention in a previous meeting, uh, something that resonated, which was, you know, hey, if, if I lived in this house. My wife would probably make me back out of the driveway every time for fear of, uh, you know, getting into an accident. So that resonated with me because that actually happened, uh, for the first three months, we lived in the home, brand new baby. Uh, my wife made me drive for the first couple uh, of months with our newborn. So um, that's primarily what I want to focus on in terms of getting that, you know, making sure that that's approved with the board. And the intent is to, to, to pave that. So that's really just the most important first note, and the second one, uh, you know, I came to already was the fence. Um, as I mentioned, you know, my daughter's getting older, starting to run around, we want to have a protected yard in our, our back of our home. And by uh, re uh, purposing the fence, replacing the fence. It's going to help us put two gates hopefully at both corners of the home. Uh, in order to close off the backyard, and then we can be back there and not have to worry necessarily about her. Um, you know, getting into a, a situation where she can enter the road uh, in a, in a dangerous way. You know, at the same time, we're just requesting that it actually wrap all the way through to the front of our driveway. Just for both appearance purposes, and then, hey, if, if we are in the front yard, there's actually a protected area. Uh, for, for her, for us, um, in that portion of the yard as well. Um, the, the next one that I have on my list, that's kind of like on the cusp of need and nice to have would be that shed. The reason why I say it's, it's kind of on the cusp is we actually have a very small garage, we can't fit either car in it. Uh, so it really is just storage for us, and you know, seeing as we've had the winter, we just had, had my snow blower in there a lot. Um, snow blowers have the open blades, so you can't really protect that unless I just put a tarp over it or anything like that. Um, and as well of my lawn mowers in there all the time, that's right, so I, I mow my own lawn, it's not that large of a property. So trying to, you know, do it my own way, but, but those types of tools, having exposure directly to my children as soon as they come out of our. You know, kitchen, right into the uh, the uh, garage, that's just having the shed is one further step away. Further removed from the children so that we can kind of protect them from any of the types of machinery or just, you know, tools and gardening stuff that we have there. So that's kind of the last of my list of saying, hey, like, these are the things that we absolutely want to focus on. And then the nice to haves kind of get into the category of there with, you know, the paver walkways, like I mentioned, they're kind of uneven, unsightly. Um, we already replaced a, a portion of our pavers in the backyard to try to clean up our, our, our yard in the back to spend more time. We wanted to continue doing that with the front pavers and then a wraparound from our driveway to the pa, to the uh, slate. Um, portion in the backyard, our patio in the backyard. And then the house number post, you know, hey, we walk around a lot, we walk from our property into town, and that seems to be a decorative. Uh, you know, piece that a lot of properties around here do, and we just, we tend to really like it. So figured we would include that in this request, and then a flagpole. Um, if you read our description, uh, my, my father in law, um, passed away actually three years ago, uh, just this past weekend. And um, he was a Navy man, loved, uh, you know, honoring the country, he had a flagpole installed at his house. And so that was always something that we felt we would do as a nice little ode to him, uh, if we had the opportunity. So as I mentioned, um. Really, the, the, the key portion that we're focusing on is safety, that's why all the needs that I brought, bring to the board tonight. Are in that, that vein, um, and so, you know, I do appreciate you hearing us out. And if you have any questions at all on what I presented to you tonight, I just wanted to, uh, thank you for the time first, first and foremost.
Joe, you need to unmute.
Uh, members of the board, uh, do you have questions, good presentation by the way?
Thank you.
Could I ask a question about exactly where the, you proposed to have the fence go? So the fence, you want to have. Stop, normally fences stop at the rear of the house. Normally, they are not allowed to go around to the front of the house, so could you just make clear exactly where you wanted the fence to go? And I certainly agree, it's really important to have a fence because you're on a really busy road and you've got little kids. So. A fence, I, we just have to figure out where, where is permissible to have a fence.
Definitely, so uh, my neighbors actually own the fence. On the, if you're looking at the survey on the top portion of my property. And so our portion that we would look to replace would start at the right rear corner of the survey you're looking at. Go from.
Which, that depends which way I'm holding this survey.
Um, so actually based on the, uh, the compass, the north part, the, the northern part of the property.
Okay.
Is, is our, is our neighbor's fence, and so at the northeast corner, we would like to start there. You know, come straight down towards the southern part of the corner. And then wrap from the southern corner all the way adjacent to Woodland Road. And then wrapping to the face of Luanica Way, stopping at the driveway. And I apologize if that wasn't more clearly marked.
And how tall a fence are you talking about?
Four foot open fence.
Yeah, so that, that's okay, that doesn't attract.
Okay.
That's okay, the only, the only minor thing on the fence, and I, I, I wouldn't have a problem. Garrett, you felt that you needed it, but on a corner lot, you're supposed to have it, uh, reduced size at the corner. Down to two and a half feet or something, but in this case, I wouldn't suggest we do that.
Yeah, they, yeah, I was looking at, I'm looking at the drawing now, um, yeah, that, the corner shaved off partly anyway. There's a two point five foot height.
Do you understand what, what we're talking about in the fence ordinance, if you're on a corner lot?
Yeah.
You're not supposed to run the fence, you, you're not, you're supposed to have a decreased height at the corner to not get into line of sight.
But in the sightline, and we heard about that earlier, um, I don't know how it's measured here, but. I had one quick question there, is there a right on red at that intersection, I know there's a stoplight.
No, there's not.
So people turning right from Woodland onto Luanica, they have to wait for the light to change. Is that correct?
Yeah, my knowledge, yes.
Okay, I mean, I understand, that's, it does mean they're not going to zip around, and I'm just wanting to understand. Uh, yeah, it's four feet open all the way around, um. The corner lot issue, um. In the back, which is a right hand side, your backyard, once you, well, it's complicated on the corner lot. Once you get fifteen feet in from the uh. The street. You can go.
That's for solid, so, so I think, I think he's okay with four foot.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking, children, I, you might want to have a solid fence at some point for more privacy.
Or you can plant shrubs. Looks really nice.
And I was.
You know, that buffers some of the noise because you're on a very, very busy corner.
Right.
So I mean, you, you know, the fence really makes so much sense and the gravel, you know, paving that gravel turnaround, you know.
But you might want to close the fence or have a gate so that your kids don't run out the driveway. I don't know how you.
Thought about that. Our neighbors actually have something that, you know, the neighbors on lot fifty-two. Have something like that. That was left from the previous owners or maybe even the owners prior to them, but. You know, I think we discussed it, but at this point, what we're requesting would be a drastic improvement. So.
Yeah, no, five foot open. You don't need a variance on that. That's good. On, on the fence, so quick question on the photo. The two middle photos show fences. I take it the top one, the wood fence. Is along the Woodland Road side of your property?
Yeah, that's correct.
Now, I, I was confused with the picture below that. Where is that taken from? I couldn't figure that out.
The picture below that, looking at the orange door.
Now to the right, looking at, I guess it's, is that the back of the house?
That's the left side.
That's the garage side of the house.
That's correct. Yep. And that's technically the side of the fence that my, my neighbor owns.
But is the, the building to the right, is that your part of your property? What is that?
That's correct. Yep. That's, that's my northern corner of my home. If you're looking at the survey, it's the garage. Northern.
I mean, you could, you could put a fence up against that other fence if you wanted to. You don't, you don't have to forego a fence along that line. And only, you know, rely on your neighbor's fence, especially if it's in bad shape. You could.
We do, we're thankfully, we're in good communication with them. They actually have a, a son who's my daughter's age, my older daughter. And so. We do know that they're looking to replace that fence as well in the near term. So I appreciate that, but you know, we're, we're in pretty close contact with them about that. So I do know that we're gonna, they're, they're going to pursue that pretty soon. I think the issue with that portion of the home was again, you know, the request for that set of pavers. You know, leading back, but again, the fence on that side was not part of the request.
Okay, so. The fence doesn't seem to pose, pose any problem for us. I'm speaking for the board and I think everybody agrees with that. True. Nobody has a problem with this fence.
I think so.
Yeah, you, you need, you need a fence there. Four foot open is permissible. If you change your mind, then you may need a variance. We'd be open to that, but from what you proposed, that doesn't. That's not a problem. And then just moving to. The gravel turnaround spot. Have you considered doing pavers in there to cut back this impervious at all or, or right now it's a hundred percent. Impervious, right? Gravel, it's considered impervious because.
I apologize, I didn't mean to interrupt.
It, it's impervious. So it's treated as impervious or should be counted as impervious. And the idea being, yeah, you drive on it enough and then it's impervious. So. Have you considered pavers there or?
Unfortunately, the, the, what I was going to say is that I believe it's being calculated into my impervious coverage. And this is from my communication with, with Danny that. Because the primary purpose of it was parking, that he was including it as impervious coverage.
Right. And what I'm saying is if you, instead of putting pavement down, if you used. Cause you're going to, you're going to pave that, right?
That was the intention, yes.
Yeah.
That was the intention.
If you did, if you did, instead of that and you did pavers. In sand, then you get a reduction of twenty percent in impervious. And all I'm asking is, did you consider that or are you aware of that?
To be honest with you, I was not fully aware of that. A neighbor actually reached out to me and, and mentioned that they had pursued something similar. So i- if, you know, if the board is, is suggesting something that, like that being. You know, the proposed solution versus gra- versus, versus pavement, you know, I'll definitely try to follow up my best and maybe even speak to a neighbor about that.
I have a question, I have a question about the turnaround thing too. I, I absolutely agree that. Having a, an ability to turn around and coming out facing Luana Way is critical for safety purposes. My question is, do you really think you need something as big as twenty by twenty? Which is, which seems awful big in terms of just doing a turnaround. I was, I was wondering if you would consider making the turnaround twenty by ten. That we've got, with certainly the, I think that's plenty for a turnaround. But if you did twenty by ten and if you did it paver, with pavers. I think you actually bring your impervious coverage slightly below where it is right now. So you're not, at least you're not making it any worse. But I, so I think there are two questions there for you. One is, do you think you could do with a slightly smaller? Turnaround area. And then second, Joe's question about would you consider doing the pavers?
Well, can I throw something in there not to interrupt that too much, but. Let me throw a little backdrop against that question for the board and Jim. I went to this, you know, I, I live nearby. So if we go walking to Geraldo, we walk right past your house, this house. Okay? So we're very familiar with crossing the street exactly right there. Okay?
Okay.
And this is. At, you know, aside from Main Street. This is probably one of the busiest intersections in Madison Borough. Honestly, it's crazy. And people come blasting up that hill off Luana, lower Luana, over that hill. It's very dangerous and it was, was, it was reconfigured a couple of years ago. And in my opinion, it's not that much better. Okay? And. For this property, there is no parking on the street on Woodland. For at least quite a number of houses down Woodland. And not only that, but. You, you'd get the shivers parking on, on Woodland because part of your car door is going to be into the road. Because it's a very narrow lined parking area there. It's not really wide enough. So you really, it's not great idea to park an expensive car on Woodland. Woodland Road, you could lose your mirrors. Okay? So that doesn't work. And then there's no parking on Luana. Cause the only parking on Luana is probably hundreds of feet up. You know, a block or two up past. Whatever that street is right there.
Glenwell, I think.
Glenwell, where they, where they carved out parking for walkers and bikers. And that's limited. They really can't use it. And my point is that where they're disadvantaged in this hardship is not only is it a busy corner lot. But if you have guests, right, or somebody just stopping over and you, and they want to visit you. There's no place for them to park. Honestly, there's no place to park and, or. It, it's not good. So I, I really felt like as I first looked at this, I said, look at the size of that. That's kind of big. And then I thought, well, what if I lived in this house and I had house guests? What would they do? Right? This is like a serious problem.
Joe, you're completely right. And just wait. I mean, they've got two kids. A year or two from now, they're going to be into the school carpools. And there's going to be somebody picking up and dropping off and going in and out. You, you know, you just have nowhere to go on that lot. I think you really need that full twenty by twenty spot. I agree with Joe completely.
Yeah, I mean, ideally would have been great to ask for it before carving it out, but. I'm looking at, I'm looking at it, I'm looking at it with a kind heart saying. My goodness, this is one of the toughest lots I've ever seen, to be honest with you. Terms of safety and getting in and out, it's got to be a little air raising, you know?
Yeah, I maybe what you need there is some low level shrubs to screen it because. And I know you're, they're talking about doing the outside now. Cause looking at the photo, it's pretty much in your face. I mean, I, I understand you need it, but. I don't want to see it either. So.
That's a terrific idea, Gary.
But maybe, you know, three, four foot high shrubs. I mean, that would really soften the look.
Tremendously.
Cause looking at the picture, lower left picture, it's. Pretty prominent though. Obviously I understand they haven't focused on the yard yet, but even with green, nice green grass, it would, I think it would stick out. Picture Bob, you can't see the car parked there. And just some loads, some shrubs would, would buffer that view as well.
P L L, you, you understand what we're saying is putting shrubs around the gravel driveway? So you don't really see the Belgian block in the driveway?
I one hundred percent understand. I actually recommended that to my wife last year when we were thinking about what to do with the yard. So I totally understand.
The ordinance has a provision that says, don't park in the front yard. Now here, obviously you got no choice, but it, it's, it's a goal is not to have cars in front of the house. Here you have not much choice, frankly. So.
Well, I appreciate, yeah, I appreciate, you know, the way you, you know, kind of position that because. You took the words out of my mouth, which is, you know, there's, there's often situations and I understand if. If it were, you know, half the size on, in terms of width. You know, we wouldn't be dealing as with as big of a overage from a impervious perspective, but. You know, with two, we have two cars now, right? I work, my wife works, but you know, we also have to, you know, kind of balance that act. If I'm parked, you know, we, we don't stack behind each other, right? Often I'm parked in that one side of the turnaround. And then if she has to get out, she'll reverse into the other side of the turnaround to get her, to get out headfirst. So that's often the case. And then, you know, to the other point of visitors. You know, prior to us doing renovations, you can see some of the tire tracks from, on the lawn from, that's mainly from the rent. That's mainly from the renovations, but I'm, I, I'm no kid. They were tire tracks from others, just kind of getting in and out of those turnaround spots. Because when there's multiple cars in there, it's still super tight. So. That's just kind of my, my take on that as well.
I, so I, I think the board is disposed to. Helping you with this and you're already going to do pavers on these walkways. So what I'm suggesting is to bring down your impervious coverage for the gravel extension, let's call it. By twenty percent. Would you be willing to do that in pavers, which would be, I think a positive thing?
Do you, could I ask, do you think maybe Dennis could answer better, but would. Where pavers would meet the driveway and turning all the time, but that causes it to break down faster, that area where the pavers in the, in the driveway would meet. I just. I would, I seen me with the pressure there and the turning, it might break it down. I'm not sure that would really benefit.
Yeah, Dr. Fritsall, I think you're talking about where, where the paved driveway would.
Yeah.
Were brought up and there'd be a joint there.
Right.
Turning movements could break down either, either the asphalt or the, or the pavers. Yeah, that, that would be a concern unless there were curbing, put their flush curbing. I don't know, Mr. Palella, if you were going to curb the, the driveway and the turnaround. If there could be flush curbing installed along the edge of the driveway. To, to, to do like a flush border between the pavers. If you do the turnaround in pavers. And the driveway and asphalt, a flush curve might protect both edges of those two different materials.
To this point, I have not explored that. But if, if it's to the board's, you know, liking, then I'll definitely pursue. A, whatever's best in terms of coverage from the board's perspective, but B also what, whatever's best for longevity of that. You know, project. So definitely we'll look into it.
I think it would be attractive because you're going to do pavers. So if you did like matching pavers to these other pavers, I know you have the place all ripped up right now. So.
If you take a ride by, I'm not sure if you went by today, but we just started attacking the lawn. So it's, it's, it's getting there.
Yeah, no.
One step at a time.
I went by there today. I saw you had a crane or they get heavy equipment out there. So is the, is the board okay with everything we've gotten through so far?
Yes.
Everybody good with this?
Yeah, it seems reasonable to me.
Okay. So will you agree to that as a condition, Mr. Palella?
Definitely.
Okay. So why don't we move this along? So what we have is a, a condition to use pavers in the gravel lot. And there'll be some sort of curbing and Gary and Dennis could work out what that wording would be. And you could always check with the engineer. Make sure it's being done right, I guess, right? You can always talk to Dennis offline to exactly what it is. You need, what you should do there to make sure that the, the block that you install doesn't get ruined over time. Okay?
Okay.
Okay.
And we're going to do some shrubbery for screening.
Yes. And so there'll be a condition that there'll be shrubs. Around three sides of that to, to shield it. And.
Excellent.
And I think that's all we need, right?
Yeah, the other variances are the two foot setback for the walkway in the back side in the shed.
That seems fine.
And I don't even know what the, the, the house post or the flag. I don't know if you need a variance, but we could put it in there just so you don't have to worry about it.
Well, the shed, the shed is five feet off the line each side. Is that a variance because it's a corner?
No, no, it's just adding to the coverage. That's.
Oh, well, okay, sure. All right.
So the setback does apply to the walkway.
Oh, yes, it does.
And it applies to the existing driveway, but I, you know, I suppose you could say, can you narrow it? But that. It's there now.
Okay, so then.
Chairman, if, if I might, there's one other concern that we discussed that I'd like to bring in as a condition. That the location of the fence within the site triangle was what we were talking about in the front yard. That the final location should be approved by the borough engineer or, or myself as a board engineer. I just want to make sure that we're not impacting the, the site, site distance and the site triangle. Knowing the intersection pretty well, I don't think it's going to be an issue, but I would like to have. A, approval. Approval authority over the final location.
Okay, that sounds good. Does Mr. Palella, is that all right?
Totally understood. I guess my only question from there would be timing. It was a very long wait with the COVID materials. So I was given word that the materials are ready for us. So. Whenever we could potentially engage in that conversation and, and have that squared away, you know, I'm, I'm at your disposal.
Dennis, could you do that calculation from this? So that, or would they need their, somebody else to do that?
No, I, I'd like to do it in the field. I'd, I'd like to take.
Go ahead and look, yeah, because the, the, the property corner is cut off already. So.
Right, right.
It's just helpful, but you're right. You got to calculate it.
And, and there is a traffic signal there. So it's not as if there could be turning movements as there would be on a stop street. So it is controlled intersection, but I would still like to have that.
Mr. Palella, is, is the location of the property line on that corner obvious from the lay of the land? I'm just looking. I guess you got a sidewalk there. You're a little bit in from that. I guess Dennis, you could figure it out. Thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
I was over there today, so I'll figure that out.
I guess technically that would be a, a design waiver then, not a, not, maybe it is a variance.
Well, I would consider the sign of fences as variances. So.
Okay. Whatever, whatever.
Saying if required, I mean, well, actually not if, well, I guess if required, you don't want to.
Well, we're not, we're not, we're not requiring that it be two feet high, two and a half feet high.
Right. But I'm saying if, if it's a little bit over, do you want to drop it down to two and a half feet or just leave it at four and. Cut them a break on the.
No, I, I think we should let him have four feet all the way.
Yeah, that would make sense to me because it's not.
Just position the fence so it's not a problem with traffic.
Yeah, shift to four foot. That makes more sense. Okay.
Just work out the geometry.
Yeah, then there's no variance involved.
All right. So I want to go to the public and see if the sitting members of the public have any comments or questions.
There are no hands raised.
Okay, very good. Okay. So I think we talked about everything. I think we have all the conditions, terms of papers. Confering with the engineer, we're talking, referring with the engineer on the placement. And we're talking about landscaping around the additional driveway area. Okay. I think that was it. So can I get a motion to approve with those conditions?
Done, moved.
Roger, second.
Second.
Jim, okay. Rule call.
Mr. Dianio.
Yes.
Mrs. Driscoll.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Yes.
Miss Call, I'm sorry, Dr. Patel.
Yes.
Ms. Salco.
Yes.
Mr. Santoro.
Yes.
Mr. Foster.
Yes.
All right. Congratulations. Your application is approved. And good luck.
Thank you very much. I really, really appreciate it. And. Shall I follow in terms of next steps, speak with Fran about that?
Yeah, you can, but just, you know, the.
Resolution.
The decision will be memorialized by written resolution at the next meeting.
And you can get started with Mr. Harrington. So.
Yeah, but you can start working things out, confirm that. And you got plenty to do, but they. Yeah, but you can start working things out, confirm that, and you got plenty to do, but they I, I don't know that they even need a permit for any of this, do they? You know, Dennis, I'm not sure what they need, but I guess a zoning permit.
You need a fence permit, right?
Yeah, it's, I'm saying there's no building permit. I don't know for the shit.
No, okay, no.
Anyway, whatever, that's for others to decide, but I'm sure there's plenty to do and he'll figure it out, okay?
Well, thank you to all the board members. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Yeah, good luck to you. Okay, next one is case number Z twenty-one oh one three, Kurt Schleck, block five oh six, lot thirty-one fourteen Oxford Lane. Applicant is seeking permission to construct a second story addition and new air conditioner compressor in an archery single family residential zone requiring relief from maximum previous block coverage.
Hello.
I see, uh, there you go, Mr. Schleck, how are you?
Hey, very good, very good. Thanks much for, uh, for, uh, listening to, or listening for my, uh, my application this evening.
Okay, hold on now. Uh, Gary, we have some materials we wanna.
Yeah, it's, uh.
I also have my, uh, my architect, Alex Rodriguez, who, uh.
Well, we swear them both first, then we'll mark exhibits, then you can start. Mr. Rodriguez and Mr. Schleck, can you both raise your right hands? Mr. Schleck, yeah, thank you. Do some of us for a testimony you are about to give will be the truth.
I do.
Yes, I do.
Thank you, that's fine. Mr. Rodriguez, you're licensed architect?
Yes, I am.
Okay, that's great. So Fran, why don't we, uh, I can start, we have a March seventeen zoning denial letter for Mr. Buckle, B one.
That is correct. A one would be a survey prepared by Murphy and Hollows dated December ninth, twenty twenty. And A two would be the site plan consisting of six sheets prepared by A R Architects LLC dated March eleventh, twenty twenty-one.
Okay. All right, so Mr. Schleck, you wanna give us a brief overview and Mr. Rodriguez may just.
Yes, I do. I see I can share my screen here, I don't see where I can share my screen. Um. Well, okay, I could talk, yeah, uh, right now, man, I'm, I'm looking at the, uh, the, the site survey, uh, so we, um, by the way, thank you everyone for, uh, to.
And do you know how to share screen? We can't see that, we're not looking at it.
No, I don't, I can't, I don't see where I can do the share screen on my.
There should be a button, no? Green button?
Hey, we'll read chat, participant, sharing, there it is, there we go. Here we go.
Yeah, the green button, that's good, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, the big one right there. Sorry. Okay, yes, uh, again, thank you, uh, very much for, uh, for taking my, uh, my application this evening, uh. I've been a proud Madison, uh, resident since two thousand and one, uh, so I can't believe it's been twenty years here, but uh, so, uh, at, living at, uh, fourteen Oxford Lane, uh, so here is the, uh, so the plot plan here. And I have packed my paper driveway and my existing, uh, split level house. Uh, that's here, there's a paper driveway and paper walkway, uh, as well as a paper rear, uh, patio and it's a, a wooden walkway that connects the two together there. Uh, I, it sits on a non-conforming lot of, uh, seventy-nine forty-four square feet where, uh, ninety-three seventy-five is required. Uh, using that as the hardship because, uh, my existing structure is, um, at thirty-one point seven percent, uh, coverage where thirty percent is required. Uh, we are looking to do an addition, uh, and it's just gonna add point one percent, uh, so thirty-one point eight percent uh, coverage and that point one percent, uh, comes from the AC unit, which would be required on the side. Uh, I'm not spanning any part of the house, we're using the existing house footprint, um, but this is the, the coverage. Inside the house is what it currently looks like, uh, is your typical split level, we have our bed, uh, bedrooms up here. Uh, and then our kitchen, living room, dining room, kitchen. And off of our dining room, we do have a sunroom, uh, porch, uh, where we spend most of our time just during the summer, uh, call it a three season, it's more of a one season room. It's, uh, very, uh, just, uh, thin, um, uh, aluminum, uh, with the, with the windows in it. Uh, so what we're doing, looking to do is absorbing, uh, that piece, so again, not using any, extending any part of the, the footprint, but making that more substantial part of the house. Uh, and then taking on the parts that are in dotted line here, uh, do have two young boys that, uh, I think keep beating each other up as my wife and I are, uh, you know, working, making breakfast and or lunch and dinner in the kitchen. Uh, we can't see them, so we're opening the whole house up, uh, to looking like jump to this one here, uh, and expanding the kitchen, uh, so making this all one, so absorbing that, making that sunroom a, uh, substantial part of the house and make it a part of the house, not just a sunroom. Um, and then making an island and kitchen and much bigger, uh, much more usable space there. And then above this, uh, living room, just the living room, dining room space, uh, we're looking to add a another, um, another floor up, uh, so into the master bedroom, uh, and the bathroom and then you see a closet, although this should say, Gretchen Schleck has nothing to mistake my name on it at all, it's all my wife's closet. Of course, that's not something for the board, that's more. I think, I think mine's gonna be a little closet over here with half of it being her shoes, the rest of it's gonna be. Anyhow, um, this is, uh, so that's the, the upstairs there that we're looking to add onto that. Um, so looking from the rear of the house now, let me just open up, uh, zoom in a little bit. Um, so this is what the house looks like. Currently, you can see the, the patio, pavers there, uh, our sunroom out the back, you can see it's like sort of the thin aluminum siding, aluminum, uh, walls and the windows, uh, we love spending our time in there. Um, and that's why we wanna make it more substantial, still keeping the windows, so making it absorb as part of the house. Um, so the, like I said, the, the variance we're looking for, um, is really because of the, uh, air conditioning unit that we're gonna need to, uh, add in here to give, uh, point one percent additional, uh, impervious coverage, um, to bring it up to thirty-one point eight percent.
Okay. Did any, does the board have any questions?
Yeah.
It's like a very minor, um.
Very minor.
Very minor and very nice. It's gonna be a big improvement.
Yeah, and I did, when I went there, I, I noticed that two houses down there done almost the same thing, looks fine. So, um.
Uh, yes, yeah, my wife said that you, uh, uh, that you stopped by, um, so yeah, I'll thank, thanks for taking the time out to, uh, to do that, to do that. Um, yeah, very, very similar to what they're doing.
Okay, so can you stop the screen share so we can see each other? Okay, good, um. All right, I, I really didn't have any issues with this, what is, what is the board thing?
No concerns.
None, no.
I think it's fine.
Okay, so, um, I don't wanna really make this take longer than it needs to then, so could we go to the public and see if there's any questions from the public or comments?
There are no hands raised.
Okay, so we'll close the public portion. Um, you know, the application looks good to me, uh, you know, why don't I just say really quickly what I think, uh, I think that, uh, it's, uh, hardly any, uh, size um, variance required here, it's really going straight up, see air conditioning unit adding to it. And I think it'll look fine, I mean, you got a preview of it by looking at the house two doors down, so I didn't have any issues with this. Um, Roger, what'd you think?
Yeah, I agree completely, and it is a fairly significantly undersized lot, so that, there was actually a house to the left end, one at the right, they looked almost identical, so, um, I, I think it'd be very favorably.
Very soon.
No issues, it's the same reasoning, um, you know, the lot definitely has some challenges on the size and this is so minor, you know, so I have no, no issues.
Tim?
I think it's fine, I, have we ever granted a variance for less than nine feet? For the previous coverage?
Uh, probably. Uh, Tim?
Yeah, no issues, I, I agree with everything that's been said.
Diane?
I agree as well.
Christine?
No issues, thank you.
Okay, so I think that's everybody, so, uh, there are no conditions, so I kinda get a motion to approve this application.
Done, moved.
Second?
Second.
Roger, second, so I'll get a roll call.
Mr. Diania?
Yes.
Mrs. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Yes.
Dr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Salco?
Yes.
Mr. Santoro?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Okay, very good, hey, congratulations, best of luck to you.
Thank you very much, thank you all for your time, I appreciate, uh, it's been working on three hours here, guys, I appreciate it very much.
Hey Kurt, Dennis? Your mom, Tom and Arlene?
Yes.
I, I was married to your cousin Jackie.
Oh.
Actually, your aunt Jackie.
Aunt Jackie, yes, yes, great, great to chat him.
Good to see you.
Yeah, that is my parents.
Yep, my best to you folks.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Will do, take care, thank you.
You have to go over there for dinner one night.
Oh, you got dinner in my brand new kitchen once I get it done. If I can start to afford it, to replace it with lumber, Jesus.
Okay, so we're gonna move on now, because, uh, we have a little bit of time, thank you very much.
Joe, I'm gonna recuse myself from, uh, the one on Belmont because of my housing authority connection.
Okay, so then you, you could, uh, you can take the night off then.
Aunt Joe?
Yes.
Ms. Salco also needs to recuse herself because she is.
Right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm a property owner in the street. Do we have enough voting members though? I was thinking.
You only need five.
Okay.
I need four.
Okay.
We'll have to see where it goes, we may not finish tonight, who knows?
Okay.
All right. So you. Good night, I'll see you all soon.
All right, good night then. Okay, so this is, uh, case number Z twenty-one oh fifteen, Stephen and Beth, uh, Crozak, Crozak? Maybe they can, are they on?
Yeah, give me one sec.
Okay, I'll read this, block thirty-eight oh three, lot forty-six seven, Belmont Avenue, applicant is seeking permission to convert an existing permitted two-family used to one-family use, roofed, front stoop with steps to, uh, excuse me, rear two-story addition, rear deck, rear driveway expansion, turnaround, vertical expansion of existing attached garage, accessory structure, and are for single-family or two-family residential zone requiring relief from minimum front yard setback, minimum side yard setback addition, and maximum height of an accessory structure. Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you. And you said that, you said that well.
Say it again, say it again for everybody.
I, I say it like Krautcheck, but that's my, and everybody says a little bit differently, even in his family, so.
Okay, well, I do the best I can.
Perfect.
Okay.
Why don't I swear you in, I won't repeat your name? Who'd you, so, raise your left hand, uh, Mr. Gogan as well? Right hand, I don't know, whatever, doesn't matter. Uh, do some of us for a testimony you're about to give will be the truth.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, I do.
Okay, all right, so why don't we, uh, note, we got a zoning denial letter April twelve, that'll be B one. And Fran, do you wanna take over?
Sure, um, B two is a previous zoning board application and resolution dated April twentieth nineteen eighty-one.
And, oh, I think everybody has it, is supposed to want to have the plans attached to it? Because that's what I have.
Yes, everything that was submitted.
It'll be collectively, yeah, all of that.
Right.
Resolution attached, run B two, B two, okay.
Um, A one, boundary and topographic survey prepared by Corson Engineering LLC dated two twenty-two twenty. And A two, site plan consisting of eleven sheets prepared by Jeffrey Gogan Architect dated twelve twenty-six twenty twenty, having a last revision date of three nineteen twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
All right, so, um, um, whoever would like to start, uh, Ms. Krautcheck or?
Thank you, yeah, I'll start, um, and introduce myself and a little bit about my family and thank you for sticking this out with us tonight and hearing all these cases, this is pretty incredible, so I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you guys today. Um, so, uh, this home is where I grew up, uh, my siblings and I grew up and, um, we all moved away at some point and then my parents stayed on and so we throughout the years, um, although living in East Hanover, we have always been very connected to Madison this whole time and, um, our family even have bricks, uh, in supporting of the restoration of the train station and the YMCA now, um, where we're still members, even from East Hanover. And I'm also a long-term member and past president of the Madison Branch AAUW, the Association for University Women, and we raise money for local women to go back to school. Um, so I'm very involved in Madison, I'm at the Butta Hill Day and all that kind of stuff. Um, in fact, our, our, our family definitely spends probably more time in Madison than we do even in East Hanover. And when I became, um, the, the executor to the estate, um, we decided that, you know, it's where our heart is and so we purchased the home for my siblings and I'm really looking forward to making it our own. Um, so, prior to our family moving in, the home was rented out as a two-family home and I think Mayor Bob Connolly actually was a tenant there, in fact. And so prior to moving in, my father only removed just a few walls to accommodate us. So this whole time, our whole lives, we've lived with a really awkward floor plan, two front doors and two separate electrical systems and, you know, the plumbing and heating and cooling system, everything really needs to be renovated, so. Um, some of the problems that we have, uh, is that I have a family, we have three children, twins who are nine and, uh, a girl in high school, and so we need to make some modifications to fit our family. Um, we would like to make it look like a single-family home and respecting its original style, kind of bringing it back to how it was originally meant to be and um, there are currently only three bedrooms, so, uh, and one of those bedrooms was my brother's and that's an addition and it's kind of odd because the ceilings are lower, um, so the closets can't be full, you can't stand in them and stuff. So, um, and then also you enter the house through our back door, we enter the house and you walk right into the center of the kitchen and in order to get in any room, you always have to walk through the kitchen, so the floor plan is really kind of crazy and also it has limited storage because the attic, which I've never been in, has low ceiling heights and is only accessible through a ceiling fan and the basement also has low ceilings and a lot of moisture issues. So, uh, and my daddy built a garage that has a loft with also low, uh, ceilings. So some of the solutions we're looking for, um, to suit our family would be on the first floor, we would like to add a little bit to the back and reconfigure the kitchen because the kitchen, as another family had mentioned, really is the heart of our home and we wanna open it up to, um, other gathering areas, so you can kind of see with more open floor plan. Um, we'd like to shift our kitchen to the back corner so that you enter alongside of it rather than into it and then we'd have room for an island, um, the whole house is pretty small. And then we're hoping to have a small patio off the back door, just to be able to enjoy the outside a little bit, otherwise you have to walk. We have a long lot, so you walk past the garage into the backyard. So that's a pretty modest little patio area and then we wanna use my brother's room as the master suite because that's where if we bump out, we'll have room for an en suite bathroom and a closet uh, that you could stand in. Um, and then also if we, for the front of that.
Does it make, does it make sense maybe start going through the plans and show us, take us through the?
I guess if I could speak a little bit and, and, and maybe Jeff could share, I don't have the plans on my computer, but Jeff could share them.
Why don't we do that, that way you could describe it as.
That would be perfect, yeah, because what, my intent to describe some of it is kind of like how our family would use it as well, but yeah, I guess we could kind of he could show things and I could speak to them.
Okay, so why don't you get started wherever you want?
Okay, um. Okay, um, so where I'm at, Jeff, I guess we, we could talk about the second floor, the bedrooms. Um, because we have, the house only has three bedrooms. And what our plan was, is to take what is the master bedroom, um, which actually has a bedroom and kind of looks like an office adjacent to it, so it's a big bedroom, and we would divide it into two. So then we would have three kind of equal-sized modest bedrooms for our children to have their own room. And so that's the existing floor plan. And then the right side where my brother's room was, which was a lot of, you know, slanted ceilings, but, so we want to build off the back so we can stand and have a closet and an en suite bathroom. And then we want to bring the front uh, up so that we can put a window on the front because currently there's only two side windows and they don't get a lot of light because we always, you really always keep them closed because the neighbor's right there. So we would really feel like we need a window in the front for light and ventilation and to be able to open it. Um, so those are the changes to the floor plan of a house. That's, that's it for the house. And then we thought we would for a di, oh yeah, so let me speak to the front of the house, I guess. You had it right there. Um, so that, see, as you can see the picture of the front of the house, that addition, my brother's room is in that roof. There's no front window, but that's the room. That's where we want to have our master bedroom.
You want to, you want to bring that roof up?
Yeah, so that it can look like the drawing above where we have, it, it makes the house look more uniform. And it would give us a window in the master bedroom. Because it makes sense to make those three bedrooms out of those two other ones and then reconfigure this. So we were trying to keep as much of the original house and floor plan as we could. I love this house. I don't want to, I only want to accommodate our family and nothing more. Um, and then you'll see from the picture as well, it has two front doors. We're kind of, kind of level the house out and make it look symmetrical and like a one-family house that it, it always really has been. Everybody would always come to the house and say, which, which door do I go into?
Okay, so you're gonna add symmetry to the house by increasing the, going up on the roof on the right side?
Yes. Uh, the, the house is like a bit of an L shape. What we're really trying to do is bring it back to square. Uh, there is a little bump out bathroom in the back, and we kind of want to fill in that corner, which could become the kitchen. Um, so that's really all we're looking to do. And, um, so we think, as I'm looking at my notes and, and we'll, and, and Jeff can speak a little bit more detail to some of the variances, but, um, the, the addition was built closer to the sideline than is currently allowed. That addition was there. My pa, my parents owned the house for over forty years, but the, um, the addition was there when we had had, purchased it. And it's closer to the property line. So if we bump out the back, we want to kind of make the house symmetrical, but that bump out is still close to the property line. So I think that's where one of the variances is in that the existing house is close. And if we straighten it out, it'll still be too close. Um, and then, um...
And you got a deck back there, right?
We have a deck back there. It's on the ground, and that's my preference to keep it low. It, um, yeah, so we have a deck, and we'll just be cutting into that deck a little bit, and we just keep a small deck still. Um, but that too is close to the property line. But otherwise, we end up, you know, to enjoy the outdoor space, you kind of have to like walk further to the backyard, but, um, and then I'm trying to think, the other, the other thing we were asking is because we don't have, the basement's really never been usable. It's, anything that's down there has always gotten moldy. So we're just gonna clear it out and keep it rough so that we can kind of keep an eye on leaks and everything, and we'll have laundry down there. But it, it won't be a, a usable space for us, nor do we have an attic. So with the garage that we have, we have a loft in the garage. Sorry, I speak with my hands so much. I'm half Italian. Um, so in the loft of the garage, we could have some usable storage. The ceiling's a little low, but because of the slant also, we would like a dormer so that we could have access to the loft with the stairway versus a ladder. So if we have a dormer on the right side, it allows us to walk up the stairs without hitting our heads and and carry stuff and actually bring stuff upstairs. Currently, there's a ladder through a hole. Um, so we're proposing that we can, or we're asking to be able to have a dormer and just make the roof a little bit higher, not still high enough uh, to make it livable space because I don't even think the ceiling inside would still reach seven, or maybe it just reaches seven feet, but um, it's so that we could actually have that as practical space for storage and stuff like that.
And then I noticed, I noticed that in nineteen eighty-one, you got board approval, zoning board approval to build this size garage you have there.
Yes, my father did that.
Okay.
He was young.
So, so that garage is essentially permitted um, by resolution of the zoning board in nineteen eighty-one?
Yeah.
But if I understand, there's a, a small loft area there, and you want to use that for storage, and it's no way going to be habitable space, correct?
No, yeah, no, it's not, no.
Because there's, it's just storage in there. There's going to be no plumbing or anything like that?
No, 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 no. Yeah, no, the, it's, the whole garage is rough inside, and it was his workshop and, and storage and stuff like that. But um, we're just thinking in terms of for storage. I have, and I look at the house now and I think about bringing my stuff into it. I'm like, where's our stuff gonna go? You know, we have two nine-year-old twins and, and a teenager, but, um, so, but the, the garage is huge. It'd be wonderful storage. But like I said, it's, and the loft has always just been storage, but I, I don't really know how my dad safely got stuff up and down with this ladder. So I, I thought if we could make stairs and so it just feels like you can go up and down it easily. Otherwise, I'll probably never go in it.
Okay.
I think I, I, I covered everything that seems so strange about the house that while we have to, you know, redo everything, really, you know, we're gonna give it new siding and, and bring it back to life. And while we have, while we're doing that, we figured um, now was the time for some of those adjustments. And we really, the house has been empty for two years now, just going through stuff and figuring out, I guess, you know, absorbing the situation and, and figuring out how we would use it to move in. And um, I think I, I think I covered everything. And Jeff, maybe if you think I missed anything.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think we have a pretty good sense of it. If there's anything critical you want to show us. Um, because I want to really talk about it with the board more, more than anything.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just scan through and see if anything else comes to mind. I think Beth did a good job of summarizing the whole proj, project for you. And again, in the site plan, you see the, the garage with the proposed dormer and the back stair. And there's a walkway proposed along the, like, alongside the garage. And this is where she talked about, there's a, there's a little bit of, uh, there's a, quite a large backyard behind the garage. I'll show you the survey. And that we are, um, we're also proposing two air conditioning pads. I wanted to mention over to the left, um, between the driveway and the house, which added a little coverage, but we're not, we're not over coverage. We're not asking for any variances for coverage. Um, and this is the L, so-called L shape of the existing house that's being filled in on this corner. So it's very modest aligning with the existing rear wall, the existing sidewall. And then the, uh, the deck, we did ask for a variance for that setback because it is a little higher than two feet, we think, uh, based on the grades. Uh, the, the existing one she mentioned is low. You come out the, the, the door now and you step down to the, uh, kind of like, more like a wood patio. It's not really even a deck. So we are thinking that this will be a little higher than what would be allowed, uh, for the, for the smaller setback. So it is subject to the, to the nine-foot setback.
Okay.
And, uh, there's a Bilko door here. And then one thing I, I don't think she mentioned was, uh, we're proposing a backup area. Um, so that these cars can back out and then leave the, 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 the property headfirst. And again, no, no issues, no coverage, just, uh, uh, improving the traffic flow. Uh, I'll just say that, and here's the survey showing where the house is. Belmont is over here. There's a neighbor over here, and, uh, this is the garage, and this is the back.
Okay.
And, uh, again, basement, pretty much not that usable, low. Um, this is where the existing kitchen is right here, where you, she mentioned you come in this back door and, and into the kitchen and all these strange walls and doors that, that were remnants of the two-family use. Uh, so basically a simple open kitchen with an, with an island and, uh, family area. I, I, I had, I had to mix the garage plans in as separate drawing, so, uh, I, I, I think she really covered the garage. I don't have to say too much more about it. I'll just point out that if you look closely, um, there's a dotted line, set of dotted lines that shows where the existing roof is. Um, this, this little low slope area at the top of the roof. And we're, we're gonna raise it a little bit, raise the ridge a little bit, but it's still gonna look similar. We, we want it to stay less than, uh, ten percent deviation from the allowable fifteen feet for the accessory building. So we're, uh, we're proposing sixteen point four feet to the ridge, and that'll give us enough pitch on this shed dormer to come out to the sidewall.
Okay.
Second floor, she covered the bathroom, the, you know, how this is all increasing headroom and re, reutilizing. I, I won't say much more about that. Um, and then the second floor of the garage. Again, this, this is the, the storage area with the better headroom.
Okay.
The elevations are repeated. Here, you can, I just want to point out that you can see the existing portico. There's a small covered porch here with steps out to a longer landing. You, you can see right, right in the photo here with the two doors. So, uh, we're closing that door up and closing the, this side door and putting it more centered in, in the whole assembly. And then replacing and, and elongating windows and other features to just meet with this Dutch gamble roof and extending the shed dormer element over, uh, creating a symmetrical, single-family look. Um, let's see, so this is the right side, west of the elevation. Those are the windows she, she said are existing. Here, you can see the existing roof line. So we're, we're expanding the, the height of that roof and carrying that dormer liner around. And then, um, there's the deck uh, with a little roof over the, uh, door. And the back view has that same gamble look with, with the, um, master bath window and a closet window, and then, uh, some sliders or French doors to the deck. And the kitchen window, and then, uh, this, this is the existing wing right here that's a, a, a full bathroom with, with the hallway entrance. Dining room windows, the Bilko door, and you can see the fairly short basement. Um, and then on the left side, the, the driveway side, um, you can see the addition beyond here. The deck, the, and then the, the portico over the front stoop. And that's pretty much what we have.
Okay.
I was just gonna say a few things about the, um, the planning end of it. Essentially, if, I, I wanted to just zoom in here on a an aerial from the, uh, county mod four aerial, you know, map. It's kind of low resolution, but you, you can see the fabric of the neighborhood. This R four neighborhood has a lot of houses that are fairly closely built, uh, to the property lines and to each other. You, you can, you can see the property lines here that they have superimposed over the aerial. And, and this is our property, uh, right here, forty-six. And then here's the, the adjacent house. And then, uh, you can see that on the two-hundred-foot radius also uh, up here, how, how these are the, the buildings shaded in. So we, we feel that what we're proposing is not out of keeping with what was there. And we, we actually looked into to try to find out if, if what the zoning requirements were way back when these houses were built. And we, we actually couldn't find out. But we imagine that, that it must have been like a four-foot side yard, but we don't know that for sure. But there's a consistent shallow or, or, you know, short side yard throughout the neighborhood. And, um, there was no, we, we did, we, we didn't have any report of any variances that were needed for the addition when it was built. Uh, it had to be fifty years ago, right, Beth? It had to be, um, in the sixties maybe, or fifties or sixties?
Because my parents have owned it for well over forty years, maybe forty-five, even more than that. So, um, it had to be before that.
Right. As far as the front yard, um, I should, I should probably list the variances. I think you know they're all, they're all, um, outlined, but essentially we have a front yard. The, the new, the current front yard setback is further than most of these buildings. So so we, 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 um, I'll go through by number when I have them in front of me, but, uh, let me just see here. Essentially, we're looking for a front yard setback where, where thirty feet is required. We have twenty point eight feet, and we're, we're gonna just basically align with, uh, the existing. So this, this kind of shows the prevailing, um, setback, which is actually closer than where, where we are. And then we have a minimum side yard requirement of nine feet along the side that we're expanding. Uh, and, um, we'll go back over here. So we're just aligning, and, uh, that's, uh, proposed to be four feet. And then the, the height, um, has to do with the accessory structure where I showed you that we were expanding, um, one foot, one point four feet above the fifteen-foot allowable for the ridge of the garage. But basically, uh, we feel that we, we, we could say that there is a hardship here because of the pre-existing non-conforming position of the house on the property. The, uh, long, narrow shape of the property and, and the inability to really add easily. Um, so we, uh, feel that we're kind of roped into building where we are proposing to build in a very modest hundred and eighteen point eight square foot addition, two-story addition. And, um, in addition to that, we, we feel that there is a, a benefit to the community in the, um, meeting the C two, uh, proofs where the front is, is being dramatically improved. Sorry, let me just get up to that front elevation. Um, where it's kind of chopped up now with the two doors. And as you mentioned, the remnants of the two-family use, uh, going back to a much more traditional, uh, single-family use. It'll improve the streetscape and just bring the whole house up to the level of architectural detail and trim that you see in Madison. And, uh, is appropriate now for a single-family use. Uh, and, and I think that functionally, we're improving, um, a great deal also by providing some dry storage and, um, the, the, creating the four bedrooms with the en suite bathroom and the more closet space. Uh, a, a private room for each child, and then, um, some more open functional, uh, fam, roof floor plan. So all of these things are in keeping with the master plan and the, and the, uh, just plan, usual purposes for the zoning to, uh, create appropriate residential spaces and, um, so we feel that we, we meet those proofs and, um, can't imagine any negative impact that we're gonna be creating, uh, to the zone plan or to the neighbors. Uh, we, we, we feel that this is just gonna enhance and improve the streetscape and be an improvement, uh, and a benefit to the community. Um, and can't see any negative impact that we're creating.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Are you gonna be, um, removing and replacing the driveway, driveway, pavement, walkways, and things like that?
We haven't really discussed, um, replacing all this pavement. Um, it's bituminous pavement now. So I, I would, I, I, we, we haven't really brought it up as far as that, we, you know, it's, it's, I think we, we assumed we would just recondition and keep the bituminous material and just use the same material for the backup area.
Okay.
There, there is a little... There, there is a little change also in this radius as it comes around To the Deck, there, there's a, a little, little adjustment to the edging along here.
Well, I, I was just thinking, you know, although you're not over on previous and you're not Really running it up much from what it is now. And but with all the work you're doing, does it make sense to capture some of the leaders because they all just go onto the ground right now with that? You know, is that something you're thinking of doing? I'm not saying you have to do it. I'm just
We, we I think we're, we were kind of hoping not to have to put a dry well in. We, we're so far under that four hundred foot Threshold. I, I do have the other, all the calculations.
I'm just asking, that's all.
Yeah, okay.
You know, along, along that line, it just does seem like there's some moisture problems there. The one gutter One leader runs down right at the Bilco doors, which seem to be causing some moisture into the basement. The right rear ran to the ground and then kind of alongside the house and dropped out of the front corner of the house. It just Seems like there is a lot of moisture problems and although you're not on coverage, it just might be good to try to figure out how to solve it.
Yeah, that's kind of what I've been You know, like when you mentioned all the wet basement, you know, and then you have those leaders all just dropping right there, that's got to add to it. You know, I would think you'd want to carry all that away from the foundation of the house and try and get it into a dry well someplace.
The, the front side, the front sidewalk seemed to be heaving and I think soonly you are going to replace. It might be a good time to try to run some leaders across the front yard into a dry well to get them away from the house is just kind of what I was thinking. I mean, again, your coverage, you're fine. It's just that you're putting an awful lot of work into it and you really should solve the underlying problem to me.
I, I would agree that there is, there are definitely improvements that could be made because right now I think they're just Splash blocks and saturating the, the soil around the foundation. So We'll definitely do something to put some perimeter drains and bring that runoff away from the house. It tends to, let me just zoom in here a little bit. We do, we do show proposed runoff directions here based on the topography. So it, it, it does flow down toward the street and I don't see any reason we couldn't Pick up the leaders with a perimeter drain and come out and But if, you know, it's if the board feels we should put a dry well in, I, I, I think we could just talk to the owner about it and There's, there is definitely a chronic, long-term Issue with moisture and It is something Beth, if you're going to be there with your family, you might want to consider.
I am totally.
We hadn't actually done it yet though, but.
I mean, it'd be great to make that a condition if we could do it just, just because You know, one thing I did notice when I was walking up to the house and the front right, excuse me, the front left corner there, right where there's a A leader there. There was like a baseball sized hole in the foundation. I don't know what's living in there Or what's going on, but I was like, wow, you know, that was caused by water or what?
Oh, there's a real hole or there's that we have like three sump pumps, I think in the basement.
No, there's, it looks like a hole right in the corner there. I don't know if that was from a sump pump Hole that was there at one time, but there was a hole there.
Yeah, that, I thought it was a sub pump hole where a hose came through at one point.
Maybe, yeah.
Yeah, on, on the front left, there is, yes, there, there was a sump pump. And actually, while my sister was living there, her boyfriend pulled it out. Thinking he was solving a problem. Maybe he pulled the pipe in. When he pulled the some, excuse me, the sump pump out of that corner. So yeah, when you're looking at houses in the front lower left, there was a, there should be, there's going to be a pipe coming out there. But yes, I'm open to anything that would, you know, I'm not aware of what solves water issues, but I'm open to that for sure. Yeah, I would like to do that.
Well, I'm a, you, let, let me hear from the board. I mean, doesn't, it doesn't trigger where we can mandate, I think. You know, maybe leave it as this suggestion or prudent suggestion for the applicant.
Look, I, I, I'll give my thoughts. I, I, I think it's a good idea to have it as a condition. I, I mean, I'm not I, I'm not as concerned with the setback variances. I think You know, the front yard setback is in line prevailing setback. I think it is A stylistically good thing in terms of improving the symmetry of the, the, the exterior of the house. And the side setback, the additional The additional portion of it, creating that the need for the variance is relatively modest. So I don't think it creates much, much of an issue. I'm not as wild about the, the garage component. I understand that what's, what's there is, is, is already permitted use, but I think adding to it is Suboptimal and perhaps while these things aren't necessarily directly tied The, the, the conditions around the drainage May get me a little bit more comfortable with the, with the garage.
Okay, good points. Anybody else?
I, I would also like to see as a condition, just to make sure the water problem gets solved. The, the garage, I'm good with as long as there's no plumbing in it.
I think, I think that adding, adding a condition about the water management is, is a nice plus, although not absolutely required. I think the setback issues are not big deals. The, the front setback is System of the neighborhood, the side setback is very longstanding and is large part of the result of the very narrow lot design. I think adding the, I think, I think increasing the pitch of the roof On the garage aesthetically is a big improvement because it really matches the gambrill roofs on the other portions of the house. So I think that overall it's a very, very tasteful Project, be a big improvement in the neighborhood and I think well worth, well worth considering.
Anthony, what do you think?
Yeah, I agree. And you know, I think it makes sense and the applicant seems open to it to You know, solve the water issue with all the work that's being done. I think that makes good sense. And other than that, I, you know, certainly don't have a problem with the plants.
Alright, so Let me, before we take this further, let me see, is there any member of the public wants to answer quest, ask a question or has a statement to make? You're muted.
Mr. Gogan, can you pull your screen down, please? There are no members of the public with any hands raised.
Okay, so If the applicant is willing to do it, what I'd like to do is propose a condition to Install one or more dry wells to improve the stormwater management on the property. For the main house, capture as much as you can reasonably without running up, you know. You could, you can always confer with Mr. Harrington as well On this. I don't know if we have need to do the garage, but I think at least the main house, we should Have some sort of stormwater management there. Is that agreeable?
Yes, completely. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Harrington, did you want to add anything to this?
Just a comment on, on the dry well installation. It will be contingent upon the soils being permeable. I know in some sections of town We don't encounter, you know, some of the sandier gravelly soils we do in other parts of town. So You know, it's, it's advisable. I think it's, it's great that the applicant is willing to do that, but it will be contingent upon You know, the soils being acceptable. And that, you know, what I don't want to create is A wet well, not a dry well. If, if it doesn't percolate, it can become A nuisance or worse, it could become a mosquito breeding habitat. So Is there any foundation work, Mr. Mr. Gogan, that, that's going to be done? So that we could see what the soils are going to look like.
We are digging a crawl space foundation out back, so that, that area we could check, but, but if we're going to put it in front, we'll just dig a pit and we'll, we'll have the soil checked. But I, I was just thinking as you were talking Because we have about two feet of pitch in the front yard. If we were to set a shallow dry well with good soil around it and under it and stone And had an overflow to the curb, that would solve the water problem also. It would give us an overflow. We wouldn't have to Go too deep with it, with a, a well and a too big a well. We, we could just handle The, 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 the bigger storms and And overflow.
I would find that to be acceptable. I'm not sure what the municipal system is there. If your overflow would be You know, through the, through the curb, just into the gutter flow. Or if there's a stormwater inlet along the property frontage. But there's, there might be another place to take the overflow rather than, you know, coming through the, through the curb. But we can check that out.
Okay.
Okay, so that would be a condition. Does, we've kind of talked a lot. Does anybody in the board in terms of deliberation want to discuss their thoughts on this? Christine, your thoughts on this?
Yeah, the only thing I would add that I didn't already hear is there really is a benefit in preserving this house. And that you're not knocking it down. You're finding a way to make it work. And you're stuck with the location of the house. So when you put the addition on, it's, it's going to interfere with the lot line Setback, but I, I have no problem with the, with this application. With respect to the garage I don't think it interferes with anybody else's Light air, open space. And I, I understand that you're looking for Dry storage space and with the condition that already was noted about not putting plumbing in there because we don't want this to turn into a habitable Unit. I, I have no problem with the application.
Okay, I'll just add some comments that I think it's actually wonderful to see this house. You know, it's going to be reborn, really. It was kind of unfortunate, a little sad to see the condition that was in and there was nobody living there, I guess for two years and You know, Belmont area is a great street, you know, and to have an empty house there is You know, it lights a community. Just so to see something as Christine said To be rehabilitated rather than Wiped out and then somebody comes in with application for other house that's too big for that lot is Not good. So I'm really in favor of this. I have a little concern about the barn, but you know, I read I read the resolution and then it's permitted and I thought, well, you know, when you added the comments about Really no, no real basement in terms of usable space and the attic that You know, this is where we bend a little bit, I think. So I think that's fine, adding some storage space back there. So anyway, I, I'm in favor of the application. I, I really don't have any issues with it. I appreciate the The stormwater management. I think, you know, we've got to chisel away at this one house at a time, one application at a time. So we have Gary.
Yeah, I'm just one quick question. Any, maybe for Dennis or somebody Just trying to think any parameter on The size slash capacity of the dry well, just, just a one or two, one or more. I know we talked about the, the house, not the garage. I'm just trying to Is there any way, I was going to say is reasonable and practical. I mean, I don't know what else to say there.
Yeah, typically we base it, you know, when it's four hundred square feet or more of roof area and then supposed to capture a four inch Rainfall based on the increase in area, which doesn't pertain to this application.
Yeah, the question is whether you're doing the whole roof or not. That'll be the goal, obviously, but if I don't know how sizing, if it's all or nothing, if there's bit soil or If I follow that, I'm just trying to get a sense.
I mean, I'm, I'm thinking we could leave it to the engineer and
Yeah.
There's the talk of the architect and engineer to discuss what could be done that's practicable, right?
Yeah, I was saying reasonable and practical, practicable.
Yeah.
Is a parameter. So it's clear that, you know, you don't You know, if doing the whole house roof is prohibitive, you don't want to make somebody do that. And the reasonable, I think, would modify that and give the flexibility. I mean, it's And we think once you get a dry well, that probably the additive cost isn't that much. But at some point, maybe it's a quantum leap. I don't know.
Well, the applicant has to decide too, because now you're going to take this water that's at your foundation parted away from the house.
Yeah, it's a sensible thing. I'm just asking about trying to get a hand on You know, not being draconian in the condition. That's all.
Mr. Harry, you can handle that, right?
Yes.
You get the idea and it's, you know, it's fine. Okay.
Okay, so perfect. So with, with the condition on the dry well, I think that was it, right?
Well, I'll put based on what Christine said, the, the, the garage, no plumbing. I mean, that would That'd be a condition, so that gets flagged.
Yeah, we don't want to end up at some point, you know, in the future.
No, it's, it's just for a future possible owner, you know, they
Turn it into a second principal structure. That's no good.
Yeah, because once you have stairs and headroom, it's somebody might want to put apartment in there. Who knows?
Okay, so you'll, you'll craft a condition around that.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's the only other one that, that this storm were.
Alright, so can we get a motion to approve the application with the conditions we've discussed?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Dianio?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Yes.
Dr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Santoro?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Ms. Taratelli?
Yes.
Okay, so congratulations, your application is approved. And And thank you for saving this house. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And with the barn, with the windows and we're going to paint it white, so it won't look like a barn. I never liked that it looked like a barn. It will match the house.
I'm sure it'll be great. Good luck to you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Alright, take care and good luck. So where are we? We did good tonight, guys. We did awesome tonight. That was great. I really
Yeah, we got what, five, I think?
Yes.
Was, was it six, five?
Five.
Five, that's, that's perfectly on top of Count, it almost counts as being caught up.
You still have three that, that got carried, but that's like
And one, and one new one thus far.
Yeah.
Hey, you know something? We're, we're fighting this tide. We're doing it. We're doing it.
And I guess we'll see what happens on the tent with the movie theater.
Yeah, get ready for that one. Wear your helmet. I just want to thank everybody for what they're doing. Because it's not easy. It's more than anybody bargained for, but it's important and I appreciate everybody's effort and Fran. I know how hard you work. I appreciate that. Gary, you're a trooper. Let me tell you. Awesome. And then Dennis, thank you because, you know, I think we're benefiting so much By having an engineer at these meetings. You can see how often we call on you, right? Where before we, we had no engineer, right? So you joining us is a huge upgrade and I really like it.
I appreciate it. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Alright, so I'm very happy about tonight. Thank you, everybody. Can I get a motion to, unless there's something anybody wants to talk about, I'm gonna
Eleven o'clock.
Eleven oh six.
Yeah, we're ready to adjourn. I'm saying nice things in adjourn. Alright, so can I motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you again, everybody.
Yeah.
Good night, everyone.